When it said you're recording, I thought it was doing it.
Sorry, now you are.
Yeah. Good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for June 14, 2021, 2:00 PM session. There is no public testimony during the review session. SOC calendar continued hearing items, item number 17, 9299BZ, 949698, 10299BZ, for 9809, 2541, 64th Road, 9851, 33, and 1964th Avenue, Queens.
Okay. We didn't previously have a community board recommendation for the initial hearing, and we now have a recommendation to approve. The statement of facts now requests the proper waivers under our rules. Photos of additional temporary tenant parking space recapture signs that are key to the plans were provided. Although the signs that they did, that are legible in the photos, because most of them are taken a little too far back to read in the photo, they're missing the word "have" in "have the right." So the sign, which, those are temporary signs. They look like they printed them out and taped them to the wall, so they need to correct that typo. Copies of the PW1s for "no work alt ones" were filed with Department of Buildings to amend the CFO. Those were provided, and those were my comments. I just want to always note that our resolutions, once issued, should clarify that this waiver is of MDL Section 61B. So 60 Paragraph 1B pursuant to the board's authority granted under MDL 60 Paragraph 3. Okay, so Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you. I did not have any additional questions other than that this is a temporary sign. I'm assuming those are going to be revised to have a more robust, solid-looking metal sign or some sort. That's all.
Right, and without the typo, because that would be an expensive mistake. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Ollie Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheta?
No additional comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 18299-99BZ, 8-16, Malcolm X Boulevard, Brooklyn.
I think there might be a misspelling in the heading of Mr. Katrona's name as the applicant, but that should be an "I." Right. My notes indicate that neighbors would have been notified for this hearing, and I didn't see that done. The cover letter doesn't go through the issues that were raised by the board during the hearing, unless I missed something, nor do they address how they are being resolved. I know the owner expressed unwillingness to cooperate, but unwilling to cooperate is not an option. The owner must cooperate. Signage calculations on drawing BSA 2.2 and 3.2 need to cite to the zoning resolution sections that apply. I'm a bit confused by the chart also. On 2.2, it indicates that the maximum area permitted based on frontage for the auto repair is 114 square feet. Yet on drawing 3.2, it indicates the vinyl sign is 140 square feet, and there's no comment that it's non-complying, which is... Oh my. I'm muting the utterer. On 2.2, drawing 2.2, it indicates that the maximum area permitted based on frontage for the auto repair is 114 square feet. Yet on drawing 3.2, it indicates the vinyl sign is 140 square feet, and there's no comment that this is a non-complying sign, which it can't be. For the gas station convenience store on Decal, the chart shows, without providing separate calculations for it, 76 square feet of illuminated signage when only 50 square feet are allowed in a C2 zoning district per frontage per establishment. And I ask also, are the auto repair and gas station convenience stores really separate establishments? Or actually uses accessory to basically the gas station/auto repair? They need to be separate establishments, not accessory uses. That's not the same as an establishment. So we need that clarified. We asked for photos of the site taken all the way around the perimeter and looking back into the site to establish the conditions, and we didn't receive them. We said the eight-foot block wall, if it's a high-block wall, had to be pointed and painted. I didn't see any proof that that was the case. I didn't see a response to the curb cut dimensions being greater than permitted by the prior BSA approval and likely larger than even permitted by DOT. There are bollards and chains proposed on one side, but not on the other to prevent cars from parking on the sidewalk. I don't know if having them on both sides on the other side will improve situation or if it's a viable maneuvering option. U-Haul parking is still shown on the plans, and the commissioners at the last hearing discussed at length that there has been no demonstration that the site can handle this additional use without imposition on the adjoining residence and sidewalk parking. It sort of was just ignored. We stated that the vacuum has to be relocated away from the residence and relocated away from proximity to the sidewalk line or removed. It wasn't, and the proximity to sidewalk line is what has been raised several times as causing parking on the sidewalk. No dumpster enclosure is shown, and dumpsters are indicated on the plans at the rear of the building next to the residence. We stated these had to relocate and that there needed to be an enclosure. We also stated that there are too many cars on the site, that there needs to be better noise and exhaust buffering with respect to the residential adjacent, and that the required landscaping must be planted. Also, the collapsed fences that belong to the neighbors can't just be, you can't just say, "Well, the collapsed fences are on my side, but they're not my fences, so therefore I can't move them." Yes, you can. They're on your property. You can move them onto the neighbor's property and install proper fencing, appropriate fencing with privacy slating or using sound-absorbent material according to the situation, because we talked about noise affecting the residents. So I actually don't think the submission was fully responsive. This applicant representative is usually very responsive, so what I see between the lines is an uncooperative client who won't let the applicant rep do his job. Usually, we get, we're often sort of one-and-done with this applicant's role. So Vice Chair Shonda.
I agree with you, Madam Chair. And I maybe, I'll go through my notes. There might be some repeats. The improvement proposed are, opposed are inadequate. Barbed wire still remains in place. The condition of the area in the rear of the building is unknown. No photos as asked or was provided. No parking demarcated on the city sidewalk along Malcolm X Boulevard is not permitted. Now we know, as from the prior union term by hearing. I believe Chief Daley mentioned supposedly DOT does not, and we were going to look into it. So such a signage, if it's been proposed here, will not be allowed. And that is not a solution anyway to keep vehicles from parking on the sidewalk. If you notice, the applicant has provided a drawing BSA 1.2, and in that it says they will put, there will be no parking marked on the sidewalk along Malcolm X Boulevard. So we know, even if it were to be permitted, that is not the solution.
Right.
Yeah, indicate the handicap parking spaces on the, there has to be at least one handicap parking spaces, and that has not been provided. The U-Haul operation needs to be removed from the site. Need to show the ADA ramp to the payment booth. Northernmost curb cut on Malcolm X Boulevard is 35 foot wide, and based on the, it is five foot wider than the previously approved plan. And that was brought up, I believe, at the last hearing. With regards to the lumen count, it is above one along the western lot line. And the lumen count on the north lot line is also above 0.0, though the abutting building is built to the lot line and has no windows, right? So I'm okay with it being a little bit over that, but not the one along the western lot line. What is the light source of the lumen count along the northern lot line? And could not locate the light source on the plan. I had similar comments on the signage as to whether this auto repair service is an establishment that is accessory to the gas station or a separate entity, because that would affect the zoning compliance analysis with regards to signage.
Okay. With respect to that, so when you were talking about the "no parking is not a solution," you were referring to that, the word "no parking" painted on the sidewalk, because I wasn't following what you meant when it first started. Okay.
Right. That's what the applicant has stated in the drawing, so I'm going by that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ollie Brown?
So I don't want to be repetitive. I do think that having the U-Haul on this site with everything else, it's too small a site to handle everything, and that's why all the uses, the cars that are parked are spilling out onto the sidewalk. And then as for their comment about the people on the sidewalk are not their own business, but are rather neighborhood people who are just happen to park on the sidewalk, and they make a statement that they tried calling 311, and there are no response to their complaints. Well, they're business, and they need to hire a private towing service. And they need to have the signs up that say cars that park on the sidewalk will be towed, you know? And that's what they need to do. They need to be very strict and enforce it. I agree. I believe that the landscaping should not be in planters. You know, I do know that there is a space issue on this site, but I think that once they remove the U-Haul, they'll be able to spread out the other uses just fine. And I think that also the signage analysis, what makes this site different from all of the other gas stations with convenience stores and auto repair that comply with the maximum signage per frontage? Why do they, why is there this difference, and they get to do it differently? I don't understand. And so that's it.
Right. Correct. I have a question about that, though. A lot of the times, the convenience store is accessory to a gas station or automotive repair that received a variance. So there isn't a question about having an accessory convenience store, or let's say a non-accessory convenience store in a C district. But when you have, when you're in a C district and you're allowed to have a convenience store, this is something we struggle with all the time, right? Then what is that, right? Is it accessory to the use, or is it a kind of a new use being introduced? This is a C district, right? I think so.
A C2.
So that's where, I'm actually not sure, but normally, it's true that the convenience store is accessory to. The reason people are coming to the site is because they're going to get gas, and then they run in and they get a soda, so, yeah. So it's not like a stand-alone establishment, right? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to be repeating the same comments, but I agree on the presence of the U-Haul. I agree before that, that the submission letter or the cover letter or the response letter is not actually a response. It's just a list of items being submitted. It shouldn't be like that. It should be some explanations, some introduction to our previous comments, and below each comment, it should be a response to them one by one. The idea of just throwing a list of items and leave it to commissioners to figure it out is not helpful. So I appeal to applicants and to our PMs. When you see something like that, do not take the submission or immediately send an email to them, ask them for a response, any response, I would say.
Yes.
May I say, Commissioner Sheta, you're saying there was just a cover letter, but there was a statement of facts attached to that?
No, but usually what we get is a letter that explains point by point.
I know. It was just a list. It was like a checklist.
Yeah, and so the statement of facts, you can read it, but you don't know what changed, right? So they could have changed one number in an 11-page statement of facts. What we want to know is, we went through all of these points at the last hearing. How are you responding to those points? That's what their job is, and I have to say, that's what this applicant rep normally does. So I'm thinking, you know, he got a lot of pushback from his client. So his client needs to understand that's not okay, and his client needs to attend this hearing, so he understands the deal. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, on the lumen spread, I agree with Vice Chair that two buildings next door are like blind sides, so there are no windows. I don't think they're going to be significantly impacted with the value shown. However, these are measurements, and when I looked at this drawing, I wasn't sure whether these are lights on, lights off. Is it the difference? Nothing like indicate that. So again, it's something that's been thrown to us, and here you guys figure it out. It doesn't work like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I too request that the client appear here. I don't believe he's taking this very seriously. I'm not sure what his game plan is, because I didn't find this very responsive, and I too don't, I don't believe that's on part of the applicant representative either. So I hope that the applicant, the actual client appears and takes the matter more seriously, especially when it comes to this community that it seems that he has given up on or is ignoring.
Thank you. Thank you. Tony?
Sorry. The next item is 1201BZ, 2829 Edison Avenue, The Bronx.
There has been a change to the scope of the request. The application is no longer requesting elimination of the term, and a new drive-in ATM is proposed that will affect the number of parking spaces on the lot. The cover letter explains very carefully, I thought, the history of ownership and the tax lot subdivisions relevant to the subject application. It also explains the allocation of required and not required accessory parking, and especially that the nine parking spaces that were allocated in the variance for the subject tax lot, retail use, but are located on the storage facility tax lot, are not required parking under the zoning regulations and actually not used by the retail use but by the storage facility. Hence, no cross-easement for access to those parking spaces in favor of the retail use is actually necessary, but there are in fact access cross-easements already granted in the 2002 zoning lot development agreement between the two owners. And they did submit a copy of the zoning lot development agreement, which very handily has an extremely clear diagram showing the easement route from Edison to Grace Avenue and back, basically. On the landscaping, Section 37-90 sets forth minimum requirements for large parking areas, especially along the street frontage. I didn't see the proposed landscaping complying with all of those standards. I'm particularly concerned about the Grace Avenue frontage, and since there are more parking spaces than required by zoning, I don't see why the site plan can't comply with all or at least most of the Section 37-90 requirements for C districts. The site plan should show the total number of parking spaces devoted to each use on each of the separate tax lots, 11 on Lot 6, if I've got that right, and 78 on Lot 18, if I've got those lot numbers right, because it was actually hard for me to tell which of the site, which of the tax lots is which number. So need to identify clearly on the site plans which is Lot 6 and which is Lot 18. They also need to show a maneuverability diagram for the retail truck dock. I don't understand how that works. It looks like it has to park, slide in horizontally. I just don't like, I don't understand that. And the arrows that are shown on that site plan, which are not really maneuverability arrows, they're kind of driving this direction, they just point to the dock, but they don't show how the truck gets into the dock. It's not really a dock. It's like a parking space where you have to do a very tight three-point or six-point, or I don't know what size turn. I don't know what size trucks we're talking about. I would think they would be large trucks, but I don't know. They need to show the entrances to the retail spaces on the site plan, not just on the floor plans. We asked for a section through the proposed retaining wall area to Grace Avenue. I didn't see that, and it isn't clear whether the retaining wall details on the builder's pavement plan that was provided are standard details, just sort of your standard, you know, copy-paste details or site-specific with respect to grade levels. The survey indicates a drop-off of between 1 and 6 feet between Grace Avenue and the parking lot. And the slope, if there is a slope, I'm not, I just don't really understand how this retaining wall works relative to the drop down to the lower grade. But a slope from Grace Avenue to the parking lot could support vegetation, or if it ends up being just a cut, then there could be vegetation on the parking lot side of that cut. I'm okay with the ATM, as it doesn't appear that it will present congestion issues. The lumen level diagrams are very detailed. I'd like to note to commissioners that there are two plans for each study at each elevation with match lines. I was getting confused until I realized that they didn't fit at all on one plan. They're using match-match, and you have to look at the numbers to realize the, let's say, the distance. Each distance is numbered, and you have to look at the numbered distances to see where the match lines go. So the applicant adjusted the lighting to bring levels down as measured at the opposite sidewalk. I have to assume, but without knowing, that since the levels along the sidewalk at the curb on the opposite side are two lumens or less, they will be at zero by the edge of the residential and community facility property lines. But that's an assumption. There wasn't any information given to indicate that that's the case. And yeah, this was one that I was referring to another hearing, where they told us who attended the lumen diagram, the preparation of the lumen spread analysis. So they had two people from the, say, the Lumen Analyst Architecture Office, one person from the property owner's office, and the electrician, so that the electrician could go up to the lights and actually adjust them. So that's interesting, because they're actually doing the work. I think we probably until today didn't realize that the electrician comes along to make the changes to the lighting in the field, which seems practical, actually. But then money. Okay, so Vice Chair Shonda.
Okay, thank you. It's kind of funny, because I, when I was reviewing the drawings, I came across a landscaping plan, landscaping plan number L201, and I'm not able to locate it now. But anyway, when I was looking at the landscaping plan L201, it had a different parking layout than the layout shown in SK-2 and also BSA Plan Sheet 5 of 10 under the existing proposed plan. So I just kind of wanted to make sure we, all the drawings are consistent. And what I found interesting is that the landscaping indicated in that, in the SK-2 plan, shows rows of planting island between two rows of parking, and that was not carried into the BSA Plan Sheet. And it goes to your comments, Madam Chair, with regards to complying with the zoning resolution, Section 3790 with regards to park planting. I don't know to what extent, how much of that applies to every bit of this, but definitely elements of it can be adopted to make the parking lot greener. So those were my comments. Otherwise, I'm satisfied with the submission. And also with regards to the ATM, you know, this is a retail use and a banking use, is an as-of-right use that would be permitted. Only thing is that the technology is changing, the need of the clients are changing, so therefore they need to have a drive-by ATM, which probably didn't exist at the time when this BSA approval was approved for a retail use that may have had banking. So I don't know to what extent we allow such flexibility in our variance, if such, if this ATM machine has to relocate somewhere else, and the bank has to relocate somewhere else, things like that.
But I'm not sure what you mean by that. So is there, there wasn't a bank on this site, right?
No, but it would have been permitted under, if we had the kind of uses that we were permitting here, would have allowed a bank use. But in those days, banks did not have that ATM kind of operation. So we wouldn't have seen this need then. But this need is something that is becoming a common feature with the technology. So how much flexibility do we give for that to happen without the applicant having to come back to BSA? That's really my question.
So now you're sort of raising a question that I'd like to ask Commissioner Ollie Brown. So, I mean, I was only looking at it as how it affects the parking layout, but on the other hand, you could look at it as another use that's expanding the use on the lot. And then even though there's no floor area associated with it, so maybe it's not an issue, but if we're talking about minimum variance, et cetera, et cetera, does this implicate that at all? Because of course, you know, if we just look at the location, you could also have a drive-up somehow or other right at the building, and it wouldn't affect anything. I'm just throwing that out, because I didn't think of it even. I was only looking at it as an impact on the traffic flow, so.
I think probably the best person to handle that is probably the Executive Director, Costanza, because I also was not thinking of it in terms of expanding the intensity of use on this site. I was looking to see whether or not, number one, would they still fulfill their required parking if they took parking spots away? And being that they had provided so much more parking than what was required, I didn't think it was a big issue, as you said, because it's not additional floor area. It's literally just making a lay-by and putting a machine somewhere in the same way that one might put a soda machine outside of a store. So that's how I was looking at it and thinking, okay, this is, this is pretty minor, but perhaps I'm not thinking about it in the right way. I would assume, though, that if we were talking about expanding this use on a site that was smaller, where the maneuverability would be compromised or where the parking would be reduced to such a point that it would not satisfy the parking requirement, that would be a whole nother set of issues. So I don't know that we could make a single rule about whether or not we allow this going forward. I think it's got to be on a case-by-case basis, but I would like to hear what perhaps even Carlo has to say.
We see Carlo in here. Yeah, Carlo, you want to jump in?
Oh, there's a, I think I'd like to maybe, maybe have a conversation. Let me think about this a little.
Okay, okay. So take a look at the site plan, though. This is 1201BZ, 2829 Edison, Edson, sorry. Just take a look at the site plan and the approved plan before, and that's what we're talking about.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Sheta? Okay, uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Oh, you did skip over me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't really, I went to you and then you didn't keep talking, go ahead.
I really don't have anything else to add. I actually thought that the site plan was fine in terms of maneuverability. And having been a frequent traveler to this part of the Bronx, I have never seen this parking lot packed at all. Not even close to packed. And so therefore I didn't think removing some spaces for an ATM was going to cause any problem whatsoever. But I was also curious, as you were, about how the loading berth works. Surely it's only, I guess, deliveries by van or small box truck. It can't be by anything larger, because there's no way they'd be able to make that turn and wedge themselves in there. So to me, it just looks like a parking, a designated parking spot for like a large panel van that they would use to deliver their goods.
Right, okay.
And I didn't have any other comments.
And they're not lowering the number of parking spaces by much, I think it's like three.
Three.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you Chair. Uh, first of all, I, I would like them to update us on the status. Of um, the application to the D U T to like start working on the uh, on the reconstruction of the site, the construction of the sidewalk. They, they indicated that, that owner conveyed to applicant. That he's uh, planning to apply in June. I'm not sure we're in June, so uh, what is the update on that? Uh, other two things, um, I start with the lighting. Uh, I want to thank them for, for the like, uh, the work they've done. Uh, but at the end of the day, actually, they didn't give us what we're looking for. We'll, we're, we're looking for at the end of the day, the difference between the on and off. And all what I have seen is lights on, uh, I'm sorry, lights off at zero and three feet. And I've seen like three drawings, like, like you chair described, you have ma- match lines. And, and then I've seen lights on, but the difference, which is what is coming from just. Yes, I'm, I'm, you want to say something?
Yeah, what, there's another set of drawings that are called adjusted. That's when the electrician climbed up on the pole or whatever.
I was coming to that, thank you.
And that's why they come down to two lumens or something like that.
I, I was coming to that, so I, my, my next point, what are adjusted readings? And uh, are they the difference? So that, that, thank you, that answers uh, what I wanted to mention. Uh, the other thing, I did look at the retaining wall section. And I have two advices to them to check on before they proceed. Uh, and, and the, the first point, I just want to show it on my screen. So we, we can follow what I'm talking about. This is, this is the cross section of the retaining wall, and if you, this is section A A. And if you go back to the plan before that, this is section A A. And I, I do believe that this is the side, side. And this is the street side, and as you can see, the side is to the right if you're looking at the orientation of the section. And the street should be to the left. If you look at the cross section provided. I, in my opinion, it has two big issues. Number one is if you see the leg for the retaining wall, it's on city property. I'm not sure if this is, if this is allowed. But that's, that's for me as a structural engineer, that's not a big deal. But I'm not sure if a wall like this, which is just retaining probably at most six feet of dirt. I'm not sure if this wall needs a key, a structural key to resist cheer. And if you want to provide a key, Mister Structure Engineer, please put it right. He, he, the rebar for the key is switched, I, I'll zoom it in. You can see this bar and this bar, these should be switched. It, if, if, if a student put a, a rebar like that. His, his day is, is done. So please fix, fix that, this is, this is not good for you. And, and consult with, I'm not sure, D O B maybe, to make sure that if you want to build. At almost seven and a half feet, uh. Heel of a retaining wall on city property, this is, this is going to be okay. I don't think it is going to be okay, thank you.
So just for the person who hasn't drawn a rebar since architecture school, and I didn't really know what I was doing. The leg should be the other way, is that?
Hold on, hold on, give me, give me.
I'm just curious, we don't need to go in the long time, it's just for my edification, that little part of the rebar should just be the other way, right?
It's not like a rule, it's that, you see this dirt here at the high, high side, it pushes the wall that way. And the resistance comes from here, from this little to here. That dirt pushes the heel, the, the key that way. If, if the key is being pushed that way, you need the rebar here. On this side, on the right side, not the left side.
Okay.
So they need, they need to switch the two bars, that's why I said that.
Maybe it was drawn by a, an architect.
I'm sure it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Shabeta.
Thank you Chair, I thought the applicant was responsive, uh, the plan, I'm okay with the site plan. I'm also okay with the A P, ATM, because uh, it, to me, it's so de minimis, I don't think it has a meaningful impact on the lesser variance consideration. Uh, the only note I had related to that is that the app, I asked the applicant ensure that the users of the ATM will have proper lighting. Or whatever customary or specific measures are in place to ensure the safety of those who use it.
Okay, thanks, and we're not so, we're not concerned about the lighting because it's not a jo- it's a joy- adjacent to a storage facility. So it's really not a mission, okay, thanks, Vice Chair Shonda, you have your hand up?
I um, you know, I, I'm a little confused with the lumen uh, reading that we are asking the applicant to do. This is a site that has a frontage on a street. And uh, the abutting houses are set back from the lot line. And if you look at the, and I'm going by the uh, Google Street View map. There aren't any streetlights along um, this section of Grace Avenue fronting the homes. So I am of the opinion, having some street light, uh, having some lights spill over from. The subject property line onto the street um, is not a negative.
No, no, what they were asked to do at the last hearing, which is what they did, they followed very careful. Carefully was to ensure, because we saw these pole lights that were very high and very bright. What they were asked to do is make sure that the lighting doesn't go on to the residential property. Which is what they did, they measured to the curb, the opposite curb. And they found at the opposite curb that it's, the lumens are two. After adjusting, before that, they found that the lumen spread was very high. Um, at the curb level, so they adjusted the lights to not shine too much light, therefore on the residential property. So that, we're always cutting off at the residential property, not at the sidewalk. So there is still two lumens, which is actually a good amount of light, so you can see where your feet are going when you walk. Okay, on the sidewalk, and that's why I was saying, I have to assume that by the time it gets past the, whatever the depth of that. Sidewalk is six feet or something, that it drops down to zero on the residential lot.
Right, and, and we're talking about only one, two, two or three homes.
Well, it's a whole, it's a row, well, true, I don't, I don't know how many.
Because the rest of it is the, the, is the storage building.
No, not on that side, on the opposite side.
No, no, I know, what, the, the, the residential building, the overlap of the residential homes to the subject uh.
Right.
Site is only about, about three homes or so, rest of the homes are overlapping with the storage facility.
But so our concern was also the community facility, which is a house of worship across the.
Right, the community facility has its own set of lights along the lot line.
Right, and then eventually we're going to see that um, and it's the same applicant's rep, right? We're going to see the storage facility, it, we had hoped that it would join in tandem, but it hasn't.
Um, yes.
Same will apply to them, so they'll control the lighting on their end. And, and the applicant's rep already knows the drill, so maybe they'll come in and make the correction quickly, and that'll be that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. Um, where am I, uh, I got everyone, okay, that's it, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted, um, item number twenty seventy two oh four B Z, one forty one fifty four Northern Boulevard, Queens.
There are two sets of plans submitted on the same day in the folder. Um, you know, the superseded one should have been voided, it makes it very confusing because then we don't know which ones to review. So I'm not, actually not sure I'm reviewing the right one unless they're both the same, and I'm not going to figure it out. So really, the prior, the superseded one has to be moved into the voided folder. Um, the field lumen level readings were taken and show the levels far too high at the residential property line, onto which many apartment windows face. The plea by the engineer, I think, is unreasonable, and there are other ways to light a site than with high pole lamps. For the area adjacent to the courtyard, they should place shields on the pole lights. And on an opaque fence, place lights at elevation under six feet. Um, it's not up to the commercial neighbor to decide for a neighboring residence. What the lighting needs of their own, of the neighboring residence's own property are. And also these lumen spread diagrams only measure to three feet above grade. Not at the top of the fences directed in the administrative notice. Nor at the heights of the very tall light pole, which therefore indicates to me, it's probably shining directly into the windows. You know, twenty feet above ground, so um, even of, even offenses and blocking the impact there. The five foot high block wall needs to be planted, painted, we stated this at the last hearing. Um, and I, and I just want to add something more because of the location of the trash enclosure. On the far side of that remediation shed and the enclosure around the remediation. That um, when the remediation work is complete and those uh, testing. Um, wells are no longer needed, the enclosure should, needs to be removed. And the trash enclosure constructed of finished masonry with steel doors. Located adjacent to the service building or right after that little walk around. Um, because right now it's imposing again trash on the neighboring residents. Okay, those are my comments, um. Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, I have very few comments, um, at the last hearing, the applicant had proposed uh, striping the area along Northern Boulevard. To disallow any parking and um, to keep the path of maneuverability from the westernmost curb cut. Free and clear of obstruction, and I'm saying this because at the hearing, I had, again. Uh, my pet peeve is to move um, the air and back station from the lot line and moving it away from the uh, lot, uh, from the. Lot line abutting um, sidewalks to prevent any double parking or parking uh, onto the sidewalk. Um, the applicant at that time had stated um, that uh. That, that curb cut is not very much used and um. And uh, it, it would not be in the way of maneuverability, I'm not sure. I don't think the diagrams clearly show that, if it is, then um, I would say they, they should stripe that area. Indicate that as another parking area. Um, so that it's very clear that there is a vehicle that is going to be parked there. And any vehicle that is going to uh, use the westernmost curb cut along Northern Boulevard to access the site. Would know to stay clear of that striped parking space. Um.
So sorry, where, are you saying stripe immediately adjacent to the A D A number ten?
I had usually suggested that it be located where the ADA parking is, but I was told that that is not possible because that will affect the maneuverability. So where it stays is the best place. I'm not sure how that is, but if it is, then have another parking space striped there. So that it's very clear that that is the area where a vehicle using the gas, my air pump or the vacuum pump uh, will be parked there.
But there's room for two parking spaces there, so.
There is room for two parking spaces, and that's what I was told, that that second parking space would be in the way of maneuverability. And uh, okay, if it is, then the, I still am not sure how having the air pump there. Keeps any vehicle from the maneuverability way.
Yeah, I don't get it, it looks like actually there's room for the current number ten parking space. And also an eleven and a twelve. Because if you just put eleven next to it, for example, there's still space to park right at the edge of the property, therefore on the sidewalk.
Right, and that's how it is currently.
Right, okay.
So I had suggested either legitimize it, the current operation, and I was told that that cannot happen because that affects the maneuverability. If that is the case, then stripe that area as a no parking and then move the air back and uh, to where the handicap parking area is.
Okay.
Um, with regards to the light fixtures, um, again, as you mentioned, there are two sets of plans. It was a little confusing as to which one we should be going by. And one of the plans kind of said that this, the light fixtures that is located along the residential lot line on the westernmost side. It is going to be um. It is going to be disabled, it says is a disabled light fixture, so I'm not sure what that was meant by. Is it going to be removed or is it going to stay, I'm assuming it's going to be, it's going to stay. So I was confused by that statement. I kind of understand the reason for them wanting to keep some kind of lumen level in that yard. Um, because it is, someone needs to, um, and I think if the applicant can get a letter from the abutting property owner. Uh, that allows, that acts as a safety, and especially if the light is three foot. At, at, you know, it's, if the light level does not affect the windows of the abutting building. Because the uh, windows are raised from the ground level. So if the lights are below the ground level at law, as, as, as long as there's enough lighting. From the ground up to the light lo- uh, to the window level, that provides some amount of security and safety. Uh, and I would be okay with it, that's just my personal opinion, especially in this case. I'm not saying that should apply to every case, but in this situation.
So you should look at the photographs because you can see the.
I, yeah, I did, I, I am, and I, and I'm based on that is what I'm saying, is that if the light level falls below those window sills.
It, it doesn't, when you look at the photograph taken with lights on. You can see reflections of the light source in the windows and you can see the brick wall. Otherwise known as the wall of that property being lit by the floodlights. And so my bedroom's there and I have to sleep with an iPad eye covering because it's daylight all the time in that place. That, that's the issue, right? It's up, from, from my perspective, if they have a security problem in the back, which we don't know they do. That's for the property owners to decide, and usually you would only put a floodlight on the, on the area way. You know, six and a half feet off the ground with maybe one of those automatic lighting things. You wouldn't light twenty feet up in the air above people's apartments. So um, yeah, I kind of vehemently disagree. Um, Daryl, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just want to um, note that the plans, the two sets of plans are the same. I just had the applicant resubmit a new set because the, the original set they submitted was difficult to open, it kept crashing, so.
Oh, that's the one that kept crashing.
Yes, I, I just forgot to go back in, in.
Okay. So you know, that was the thing is I actually opened the one that crashed me, so, and then I'm like, what? So if it's going to crash our computers, please make sure you move that or delete it. Okay, thank you, um, Vice Chair Shonda, do you have more to add? Okay, um, Commissioner Ali Brown.
Um, on the lighting issue, which is the only issue I have something to say about. I tend to agree with you Chair, that they should not be responsible for what is going on on the other site. And the statement that they'd like to keep the light. for what is going on on the other site and the statement that they'd like to keep the light there because there might be criminal activity next door. I don't think that that's a, a good way for us to proceed because it's their opinion versus the opinion perhaps of the residents on the other side. And I would hate to get into the position where other applicants come before us where their light is shining next door and they tell us that it's for the good of the people next door. And that may not be what the people next door feel is right for them. And so therefore, I would say if their reasoning is that it's to benefit somebody else, that's not our issue. And they should reduce the lighting, let the other people deal with whatever problems they have on their site. They may choose to solve it without light. They may choose to solve it with motion cameras or something like that. So that's all.
Thank you. Yes, okay, thanks. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree on the lighting with both of you and Commissioner Brown. In addition to that, I, I believe they, that the major, the majority of the issues coming from the two lights closest to the residential building. And I, I recall that we, we've told them to make sure that the orientation of these two lights should be like thought about in order to make sure that they are not going to spill lights to that building. I, I see that this is not the case. I see that the luminous spread at the property line is excessive as compared to many other sites, and I believe they need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's like seven or something. It's up one, five or seven or something. Commissioner Chivetta.
Thank you, Chair. I was okay with the application. Except with the exception of, like you, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Sheta, with the exception of the lumen spread. I think this is a, this is not a very difficult fix, it seems. And I was not, I too was not persuaded on the philanthropic aspect of preserving the safety of the neighbors. I think they should, if that's their concern, they should probably send a letter to the, to the, to the owners of the neighbors to say that they need to now address this issue and they should comply with our request. Nothing further from me.
Clarify that sentence because you had two different days referred to.
Oh, I, I think if, if they, if this, if the applicant is, is so concerned with the safety of the, the adjoining residents, they should probably send a letter to the residents saying that they are no longer going to supply the additional lighting and the, and that that isn't, they have to address on their own.
They being the residents have to address on their own.
That's correct.
Okay, or not send a letter and just let the residents figure out if they have a problem now that it's, they're not always reading at night by their windows. Right. All right, thank you. Next one? Okay. The next item is forty, item number 214208BZ 182 Gerard Street, Brooklyn. Most of our review hinged on Department of Buildings' review of the ZRD1s with respect to the floor area in the attic space. Which ZRD1s have not yet been submitted to us. Not sure whether they were submitted to DOB yet. There is a draft of the ZRD1 that we did receive that may have been or will be submitted to DOB that totally misstates the language in the DOB objection from September 24, 2019. The objection states in part, in part, fixed stairs, this is the objection, states fixed stairs are one of the factors considered when reviewing a plan, unquote. This is the plan for the attic. The ZRD1 instead says fixed ladders, which is not the same thing as fixed stairs. And therefore may be a misrepresentation of the facts that BSA considers. The rest of the ZRD1 paragraph is actually unintelligible. It describes a quote, unquote, transparent ceiling, unquote, whatever that is, among many other unintelligible statements. So it actually doesn't state either the proposed conditions, the rules to apply, or the rationale that would be used to support the proposal. So I ask, are they intentionally obfuscating the question? And so it's not okay. I reject that ZRD1. Applicants counsel to correct, must correct the ZRD1 language, to be clear, and resubmit a copy of it to the BSA and DOB. The ZRD1 cannot imply that BSA is approving the architect's interpretation. We want to know whether the attic as designed counts as floor area. The application as proposed requests a slight increase in floor area from 6,160 square feet to 6,239 square feet. And that's the only thing that I'm willing to entertain, even though I'm not sure why there should be an increase in floor area at all, frankly. But definitely not the, all, the additional attic floor area if it turns out to be all floor area as DOB's objection stated it was. They also, the ZRD1 also needs to verify that the heights and dormers comply with the height and setback regulations. We specifically asked for that. So it needs to be a ZRD1 that is very specific about that analysis and the request for confirmation that it complies with the maximum heights and setbacks. In reviewing the Department of Building objections that we had previously received, it seems to me actually that would be a lot easier on this agency if all of the objections were cleared except those that require BSA approval, which as far as I can tell is only floor area, lot coverage and rear yard for which, other than the floor area, the slight floor area increase that I just described, no increase since the previous grant will be considered. So I actually think it would be more expeditious if the applicant would just clear up all of those other objections, which are easily doable if, if this is a viable project, and then come back to us when every one of those objections has been signed as essentially cured. Because we've been at this, on, sort of in too long. Let's see, not that we've had a lot of hearings, but this was submitted in 2020. And the last hearing was in March of, March of this year. So it seems like it's dragging it along just to get a ZRD1. So they should just go in and get all of their objections cleaned up. Okay, those are my comments. Vice Chair Shonda.
I had, no, I had similar question about ZRD1, but I agree with your comments. I just had one more question. As I was looking at the attic plan, the mechanical room that is shown in the attic room, that is 231 square feet. It, it lines up with a closet pretty much all the way on the, all the floors. Just wanted to know if that is going to be mechanical closet on all the floors or is that going to be an elevator? That's all.
An elevator's floor area, by the way, not a, not a mechanical deduction, right? So if it's got to stop, it's floor area. That wasn't just for you. But that's a good catch. That's interesting. Okay. Oh, and then the other, I just wanted to point out also, supposedly there's only a drop ladder. I don't see the drop ladder on the attic drawing or a dashed overhead line on the second floor to show how you get to the attic. Because there used to be a grand stair that went to the attic and now there's nothing that goes to the attic and it's pretty luxurious up there, so. What, what's the plan? Okay, Vice, sorry, Commissioner Ollie Brown.
I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Commissioner Chivetta.
I think that, Chair, thank you.
Thanks. All right. So this concludes the public review session. We'll now commence with the public hearing. Okay, we are now in the public hearing, June 14, 2021, 2:00 PM. S O C calendar, continued hearing items, item number 1799, 9299, and 9851331964th Avenue, Queens.
Good afternoon.
Are you the only one, Mr. Schnackenberg?
Uh, no.
Charles Walkiel?
Yep.
Okay. Please unmute, Mr. Walkiel.
Hi.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, ready?
Yes, do we need to be sworn in or are we?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions.
I do.
I do.
Please proceed.
Only to thank the board, we heard your comments. We are embarrassed by the typographical error in the sign. And we've spoken with our client. The client believes it will take a week to 10 days to get the signage reissued and we've made sure that they will also post the signage in a, in a more permanent fashion. And so with that, we would respectfully request, if the board were willing to entertain a vote today and, and hold the resolution pending signage, but don't be surprised.
We don't do closed votes during the Zoom life and we've learned something that you suffered from. That if we don't have closed votes, then the resolutions can go out more expeditiously. When we have closed votes, it takes counsel by surprise and then they have to figure out how to prepare the resolutions. And it turns out we discover mistakes on the drawings and all this terribleness, right?
Of course.
So, so this works much better. What I wanted to ask is, so those were obviously temporary signs. Are permanent signs on order?
Charles, I'll have to defer to you on that one.
I've spoken with the client about the typo, the typo in the, in the signs. He said that they could order new permanent signs and have them over within the next couple of days. So we would just be getting new signs and bolting them in there.
Okay, so are those permanents, are those actually?
I think they may have intended them to be permanent, but the typo is unacceptable, so.
Well, but it sounds like the commissioners would like the sign to have some sort of metal border and be posted and protected. Is that what I'm, I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I mean, it has to be a sign that doesn't fade with immediate weather changes.
Oh, of course. I think, I think that these were just like, they're not, they weren't necessarily temporary, but they were done in the same way as like these laminate signs that they use for all their parking spaces. I don't think that would have necessarily faded. Um, but I do think that I would need to fit the typo, so we'll have new permanent signs of the same quality they use for their parking facilities.
Okay, great.
It's the same fabricator. They're like, they seem to have some close relationship with a fabricator.
Okay, that's fine. All right. So then you'll just submit to us photos of the new and improved signs installed, not with Scotch tape. That's.
Most definitely.
Yeah, so you know, when you install a sign, you're supposed to use some sort of hard fastening device like.
Well, yes. That makes sense.
Just to, just to confirm, if these signs are the type that are sort of laminate with an adhesive on the, on the back of the sign so that they don't require a screw, is that, and I don't know because I haven't.
Those fall right off. You just wait, give them some time and they will be on the floor. So none of the signs that charge the rates are stuck on with tape, right?
I understand. They'll be of the same, same quality of material.
These have to stay up in permanence. As long as the parking garage is there, there is a recapture. So they really should be screwed into the wall.
Okay.
And the only typos really that have, that's missing that the sign guy missed, right?
Yes, we'll, we'll confirm. That's not for the board to confirm.
Of course, I'm sorry.
So having made signs, the sign companies never do the proofreading. That's your problem. That's how they make a little additional money.
We'll make sure to proofread them properly prior to final sign up and sending them over to you.
Okay, um, all right. So then let's go to the public. The case we are currently discussing is 9299BZ 9499BZ 969810299BZ for 64th Road and 64th Avenue, Queens. The call in number is 6465588656. The Zoom webinar ID number is 94477317922 and the passcode should you require is 575554. You may press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute when you call in. And if you are in the Zoom room, play, press your Zoom hand and star six to unmute. Or words to that effect. Anyway, so there are people in the Zoom room. Anyone who would like to speak on this application, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, so how much time to make that correction? We can, we can close this, but let, how much time to actually make the correction and give us photographs?
We were advised by the client a week to 10 days, so if we could have, you know, two weeks to get you for, two weeks before our submission, just to be sure. And then the earliest date available would be very appreciated.
We'll see what happens. Okay, right. All right. So then, nobody having called in, correct? Right. Therefore, no hands up in the Zoom room. So I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Pramada. Aye. Vice Chair Shonda. Aye. Commissioner Ollie Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheppa.
Aye.
Commissioner Chivetta.
Aye.
Application is closed.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Item number 1829999BZ 8-16 Malcolm X Boulevard, Brooklyn. You, someone, can someone send Mr. Catron a text? And if anyone is in the Zoom room who is a member of the team on this application, please raise your hand. Oh, he's already in. He's in. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Catron, when you can hear us.
Hi, good afternoon. Should also have Anthony Joseph in the room. And I believe he'll have somebody with him, a neighbor as well. So I don't know if you want to bring us all in at once.
Yes, Mr. Joseph is in. The neighbor is going to speak as part of your team.
You had asked for the neighbors to be contacted, so.
So, you know, so the neighbors will speak during the public hearing aspect of it.
That'll be fine. I think Anthony Joseph is on now if you want to slate as well.
Yes, please unmute yourself, Mr. Joseph. Thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions.
I do.
Mr. Joseph, could you repeat yourself?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed, Mr. Catron.
Yes, ma'am, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and BSA staff. My name is Glenn Catron. I'm representing 8 Malcolm X Boulevard. And so we were here during the executive session. And so I will say, we always look to improve ourselves. I did hear that the, the couple letters should articulate, you know, the changes. We have, I would say, a fairly robust statement of facts that was added to the submission that is all underlined, showing everything that was added and addressed during, you know, during our, our time between the last hearing and now. I heard a few items then and I'm hearing some things now. There may be some things that I'm a little confused about, but if I may, you know, I will address everything and of course, we always want to make sure that we address things clearly. You made a statement. You made a statement, uh, uh, Chair, that, um, I, let's just leave it at this here. We're working, uh, with the owner. To, uh, to move towards compliance and making sure that all matters are addressed. So that we could get through this process. The first, uh. The first comment that you made centered around the, uh, signage, and what I'd like to say is, um. If we refer to drawing number two point two, I did this the last time with this here. We actually have it broken down into two tendencies, okay? The gas station, the convenience store. And the U-Haul rental, of course, we'll speak about everything, and then the auto repair separately. The gas station, convenience store, and U-Haul rental. Have frontage on Malcolm X Boulevard. As well as the auto repair, frontage on Malcolm X Boulevard. On Decalb Avenue. The only businesses that have any sort of exposure there is the gas station. The convenience store and the U-Haul rental. We updated three signage analysis forms this time around with this submission. The first one that shows the gas station, convenience store, and U-Haul rental. Fronting Malcolm X Boulevard. Which indicates that the signage in that respect complies. The auto repair on Malcolm X Boulevard has a sign that is up on the face of the building. That exceeds the allowable. And that there is currently being corrected, so that it will comply with the C two zoning district.
But, um, just before you go on, you didn't indicate that. When you're showing that it exceeds the allowable, you're not indicating on your drawings that it's going to be corrected. To not exceed the allowable, so what we read is instead a non-complying condition.
Yeah, I, I respect that there in my head, but I can clarify that, uh, better in, in future submissions here is that if something is non-compliant. That we're responsible to make it comply. So the action is that that signage, all signage. Will comply, okay, is in the process of being addressed to comply. But I can articulate that. It sounds to me like we'll have a, a follow-up submission. We'll make sure that we put together a cover letter. That actually lays out real specific, uh, in addition to, as I said, the statement of facts. Which I believe is, is fairly robust and lays out. And we do have a non-compliance on the illuminated signage fronting Decalb Avenue. Again, the same thing with the single sign that fronts non-illuminated for the auto repair. Fronting Malcolm X Boulevard. This signage as well will be brought into compliance. We will articulate that. In our cover letter for the next submission.
So be, before you go on, can you respond to Commissioner Ottley Brown's question about? If I, if I look at your floor plan for B S A two point two.
Yes.
Describe this as auto repair, and then it says. Accessory convenience store. And, um. Right, so it's described on the site plan, it's very small, by the way. It's described on the site plan as, I mean, on the floor plan as an accessory convenience store. When it's accessory, it's not a separate establishment, it's part of the same establishment. So then you only get one bite of the apple, right?
We agree.
Establishment, right? So you don't get three times the frontage times two, right?
No, no, we, we agree. So the, the issue is, is that the gas station, the convenience store. And the U-Haul rental operate under the same tenant, okay? The auto repair is a separate tenant. So inclusive in those three uses is one bite of the apple. Okay, which is, that needs to comply with a single tenant. The auto repair is a separate business. Okay, so while the floor plan does say accessory convenience store. If you look at the line across the bottom. I have twenty-three feet of gas station, convenience store, and U-Haul rental. Which is the frontage on Malcolm X Boulevard. So that frontage is how we calculate the signage and what needs to comply. The auto repair is separate from that, because there are two businesses that front Malcolm X Boulevard. Okay, but each one of those uses are together. They're not separate, they were not calculated separately. Our non-compliance for the illuminated signage on Decalb Avenue. Is in respect to simply the gas station, the convenience store, and the U-Haul rental. Okay, and the non-compliance for the auto repair is the frontage, only frontage on Malcolm X Boulevard. So we're not going, the gas station is separate. The accessory convenience store is separate. And the U-Haul, which we'll discuss, being separate. Those are all counted as a single tenant. With one bite of the apple needing to comply with the allowable C two signage on that frontage. I'll clarify it better. You know, in, in a, written on our, uh, on, on our re-submission documents in our, uh, cover letter. I mean, we think it's clear. We'll take a closer look at it and see if we feel that there's anything. But we're not, we're not doubling anything here. It's very.
No, actually, no, I think, Commissioner Ottley Brown, please jump in if I'm misstating your concern. I, I think what the question was, was how come? We not, we don't see these treated as separate establishments most of the time, do we? When we have a repair gas station. Normally, it's automotive repair with an accessory with the gas station. They're all one business.
The auto repair is a sublease to the gas station, so it's a separate tenant.
Right, but it's, it is, if, um, in other situations, even where we have what appears to be. Uses that are probably subleased to the gas station, like for instance, there are times when we'll have gas station with a convenience store with a. A Burger King counter. Where clearly the site is not owned by, BP doesn't own the Burger King, and the Burger King doesn't own the BP. It's still considered one entity for the purpose of establishing the required signage limits. And so I was wondering why that would be different here.
I believe it applies to code. It does allow for separate tenants. To have, uh, the ability to have the signage as, uh, as to that tenant specifically. I'll tell you, um, I would be happy to go and review the code much clearer. I don't wanna, I, I hear you, so, um, I'm, I'm fine with, with the comment. You know, we'll address it. Let us, let us go back and take a closer look. This way I would be able to respond. Uh, in my cover letter next time that we comply for these reasons, or yes, we agree with you and we'll. Address it accordingly.
And I, I think it's a question of use versus ownership. And I, I think the, for the zoning purposes, we're talking. Not ownership as a distinction, but rather just the overall use of, of auto service.
Okay. We hear it, and the major thing is, of course, they're going to make every effort to comply, so that's the issue. You hear you. We'll take a closer look at it.
What, what I, I want to clarify for, for one, this is. In a C two overlay district, so maybe it changes things, but the initial. Variance was for an automotive service station, right? That's the variance, which is not a permitted use in this district, or whatever the district was in nineteen forty-one, when it was first approved, right? So, um, and then. The convenience store and, and an automotive service station always had gas dispensing. That's just a part of the same use. So the gas and the automotive are service are accessory to each other. One, one being accessory to the other, right? The gas is accessory to the automotive service. Along comes the convenience store, and especially in this case where it's very small, so customarily. A small, you know, incidental to the principal use. So then I, the way I see it is that the convenience store is another accessory use to the. Automotive service station, and therefore, one bite of the apple, not. Two or three or whatever, because as Commissioner Ollie Brown is talking about, you're talking about tenancy. Versus the use that was approved by the variance. That's why, this is very unusual that we see it broken up like this. We see it broken up by frontage, of course, but usually we're playing with, and, and you know, part of it is. The reason we're looking at C one. Or, or C two signage regulations is with the interest of holding down the amount of advertising signage. You know, commercial, uh, accessory advertising signage. In a, in a district that doesn't usually have an aggressive use like this.
I understand. I don't have my code book alongside me, otherwise I'd stop and take a look, but I hear you, I hear everybody loud and clear. Let us go take a look. Um, and we will respond accordingly. How about that? Is that all right?
Um, Vice Chair Shanda, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, um. This is very similar to the other project Mr. Katona has, which is on Farmers Boulevard. Where also there's a gas station and auto repairs. I think, uh, whatever question is being raised here and is going to be addressed should be, you should be looking at both the cases. Since it's, uh, Mr. Katonite, that's also your case.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, and then, um, um, Mr. Steinhaus, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that, um, in the nineteen eighties, the board refused to recognize, um. Or, excuse me, I did not recognize the convenience store as an accessory used to an automotive service station. Because, um, automotive service stations were defined in section twelve-ten of New York City zoning resolution, and it had specified. Accessory uses, um, however, the court determined that, um, further analysis was warranted and ultimately. That convenience stores could be accessory uses, and so, um, that's a little bit of site history. And again, in terms of what Commissioner Ottley Brown noted, there's a difference between ownership and, um. Uh, zoning uses.
Right. Ownership or tenancy, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, and, and Mr. Katron, I think part of what's confusing to you is, in a non. Variance situation, and as of right situation where, you know, go have at it. Every establishment gets the bite of the apple. It's treated as a separate zoning lot, right? But this isn't that case, you know, on a shopping mall, if you have twenty stores. Each of the twenty stores gets to have the maximum allowable by its frontage. All over again, but that's not the case here, so I think. You're, you're not gonna find, and I actually would like you to have a conversation with Mr. Costanza. I think you're not gonna find a situation where we've been treating this. As separate establishments, because it was one variance for automotive repair.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. Okay, let's continue.
Okay, terrific. So, um. The next point that I had after the signage there was, uh, additional photos. Yeah, we, uh, we will, we will submit additional photos again, um, from the perimeter. I thought that we had it covered with the photos that were submitted in the past, because they are. Encompassing the site from the periphery. Although, um, you asked for additional, uh, additional, uh, photos there, we'll, we'll submit that there. The wall, the west wall pointed and painted. This here, this here site is totally, uh. Under siege with graffiti and different things like that. They, uh, were tagged this past weekend and, um, or this past week, the previous week. And, uh, they're making repairs to that wall, so the issue is, is that they'll add some pointing there. It is the adjacent neighbor's wall. But having said that, um, they are taking care of it from the standpoint of mitigating any kind of graffiti. So that'll, that'll add some pointing and just clean up that wall some, again, the adjacent building. The curb cuts. So, in my, uh, in my discussed, uh, statement of facts, I had laid out. I had done research. I noticed in nineteen ten. The curb cuts were filed, predated this application by many years. Um, and researched all building department records to see what was changed. The only reason why I made any statement in this year regarding to the fact that there were. Two existing curb cuts on Decalb and two on Malcolm X. Was because the prior, uh, application had discussed the making an adjustment to the widths, which were never done. So I don't know what was behind that there. Uh, they never took action on that. The curb cuts, in my estimation, have existed. And I noted in here, you know, very carefully, that we believe that this is the way that it was historically. You know, situated. Uh, there was no change. I spoke to the owner. There was no adjustment in the curb cuts here. Uh, i- if, if you ask me from a standpoint of legality, and I don't know what was approved before. Because I work on many cases where D O T will issue a waiver, um, because of certain conditions on a particular site. But that one curb cut that's, you know, above thirty feet. That may be questionable, but the issue is, is that it's, to us, it's a, it's an existing condition. Um, and you know, the, the records in terms of what we received from B S A show the conditions to be consistent, so I don't know how the board. You know, wants us to actually handle that there. Do we do a curb cut analysis, say, well, you know, um, there's an existing curb cut that has, uh, been on this site in this condition for so long? And, um, you know, it's wider than what would be permissible if we went and filed this currently as of right. And, um, you know, that the curb cut may exceed, uh, an allowable length as applied to the C two for zoning district. Um, as far as we're concerned, I saw no applications. I saw no changes. I have no information. That, that showed any filings for adjusting curb cuts here. But we most certainly did address this here in our statement of facts. So I don't know how, how the board would expect us to handle this here, except for the fact that there hasn't been any changes to it, so. Are we required to legalize a condition that may have been granted some way, somehow, under some prior, which we have no record of?
My understanding is the, the prior approval required you to reduce the curb cuts, right? So you were out of compliance, right?
I don't know that that was the condition of the board, or that was something that was, was being addressed. I, I don't know that there, there's no violations.
They're shown, but, wait, they're shown as thirty, thirty, thirty. Sorry, thirty, thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight. On the approved plans back in whatever date this is, right? So clearly not in compliance with the twenty-ten. Not in compliance with the terms of the, that grant or the prior grant or whatever. I'm, I'm a little confused by your question. The, the property was supposed to look like the picture, and it doesn't. Right?
So. Okay, Malcolm X Boulevard, they stated that the curb cuts were each thirty feet wide.
Yes.
And on Decalb Avenue, they stated that the curb cuts were each twenty-eight foot wide.
Correct.
Okay, and then the last extension of term included an amendment. And, I mean, it did say to, to legalize an increase, increase. In the width of two existing curb cuts on Decalb Avenue from their approved width of twenty-five feet. To the current width of twenty-eight feet. Okay, but then when we have a current survey. The survey shows the two curb cuts on Decalb Avenue are both twenty, are twenty-nine feet and twenty-four foot five. Okay, which I, I think in a C two, it's possible that the curb cut maximum allowable width, I think, is twenty-nine feet. So neither one of them exceed that. Which is contrary to the twenty-eight feet that they were saying they were going to adjust it. In addition, the, uh, prior board, uh, states that two curb cuts along Malcolm X are both thirty feet. And as illustrated on the survey, one is twenty-three and one is thirty-five, and I would. I would say that the thirty-five foot width, to the best of my knowledge, is not an as of right width. So that would mean that maybe only one curb cut has an issue with, with compliance. But again, I spoke to the ownership. They have never, in the course of their, um, operating here, made any changes to the curb cuts. I don't, I don't have any, any records of. Any work being done that would have put them into a situation where they wouldn't be legally compliant. I don't, I don't have any any records of any work being done that would have put them into a situation where they wouldn't be legally compliant. Okay, except that I I understand the code to be maximum curb cut width of twenty nine feet. Um so what I'm actually asking is. Is the board asking us to to legalize a curb cut that may not comply to what current. Rules and regs are, I mean, it's an existing condition. And whatever it was that they were talking about before, they never implemented it, so I don't know where we stand, and that's what I'm asking.
Um. I mean, I guess the point is, if the curb cut is wider than what's allowed, we are not granting a waiver of the curb cut width. So if you want to put on the drawings, uh DOB to verify a legality of existing curb cut. Then you have to establish to DOB that you're allowed to continue with the curb cut. Otherwise, they, it shows up on our drawings as us condoning what's probably an illegal curb cut. So unless you establish to DOT that indeed it's a legal curb cut. We we don't take, we don't give waivers for curb cuts.
I I respect that, and I will tell you something that I've taken on cases where we have foiled um. Prior records, BSA records, and we find inconsistencies, building widths are wrong, you know, conditions setbacks are wrong. Um you know, and I know what we do, we thoroughly feel, measure and document everything as if we're going to do some sort of construction on the place. Not to the nth degree as we would if we were doing construction, but we verify. I'm gonna tell you that we see inconsistencies all the time, I'm not sure if it was just something that was documented on the drawing, in any respect. You know, we would do the right thing, if uh if that note makes sense, I don't know that BSA is telling us to go legalize an existing condition. I just responded to what the prior case had said and just wanted to make it as a matter of record that we saw no changes. There and based on a survey from a, you know, licensed land surveyor, that these are the curb cut widths that we see existing there. And they don't agree with what was stated on the plans previously, that's all I'm saying. But if if the note um will do it and if DOB, I mean, unless they're. Employed to go look at something and issue a violation, they probably wouldn't look at it.
Well, our note has to show that the BSA is not approving. And a widened curb cut, it isn't, so so there needs to be a note that says DOT to verify. Um legality of existing curb cut, otherwise we can't just do one of those. As site out of mind things, that means we've taken responsibility for legalizing a curb cut that is, that may not be legal, so.
Do you, do you ever, do you ever deal with curb cuts? I don't think so, no, right?
I can't tell you, I don't know.
Um Madam Chair, I I think um I'm I'm a little confused by this conversation. Uh because if the prior approved plan did say that curb cut to be replaced and it never got done. We have often seen cases where, you know, certain things are added in the plan that needs to be done, doesn't, doesn't happen, and that's why. Under the current board, you have taken an aggressive position of making sure whatever was prior requirements have been addressed before we close or approve. Or something like that, and I am not at all comfortable with the idea of us letting this go. Um unless it's a, it's a note added to the drawing that says curb cut to be approved by, not being approved by uh. BSA, I mean, it it is subject to DOB approval, uh we are not waiving the underlying regulations or the requirements.
Right, that's what I would like to see, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's fine, you know, the other thing is, is that um, you know, th- there was a uh a statement that this year. Was to be revised, I mean, you can always say that it's to be based on prior approval.
No, no.
No?
There is no indication that thus, that it was based on a prior approval. The only drawings we have show that curb cut at a legal width of thirty feet, those are the approved drawings that we have.
Okay, understood.
So we cannot say based up, you know, we're not gonna work this out like this.
Understood.
No position on the legality of that curb cut, so there's no BSA approval of a too wide curb cut. That's DOB and DOT's job, and if they think it's too wide, it has to go.
I got it, thank you very much. Um bollards and chains, so you asked if we should be putting them on the other side, because we are putting them on the frontage of DeKalb Avenue. Um that was not something which we had discussed previously, um I will take a closer look at that there. I'm not sure it's uh needed there, um because there's a little bit of an area where the vacuum was that will be removed. As requested, so uh and uh Vice Chisanda had made a statement about a. Uh handicap parking space, I need to look at the site plans to see if we can achieve that along that area. Um, you know, the next statement was um concerning the U-Haul parking and the maneuverability plan. Um I walked away from the last hearing, in fact, I have my notes from the last hearing, I didn't. I was told to go show how the maneuverability works on this site. Um talk about the operational aspects of everything on this particular site. Which in uh in my statement of facts. Um we outlined all of the operational conditions and actually. This'll go into a little bit more of a deeper conversation, which is to look at how all the uses dovetail together. And um you know, we looked at things like the convenience store, I almost want to take the name convenience store. Off the plan because it is not a convenience store, um if you look at the classic convenience store, they have convenience items in there. This here is a booth, it's an enlarged booth for the attendant who uh takes money. And who actually programs the pumps, the public does not utilize the convenience store. The only thing that's in that convenience store are items that are part and parcel to the gasoline service station. So I think that that's probably uh, you know, not a good term, but um in terms of everything else, you know, I. Really put together, uh we studied this maneuverability, we have two plans. Uh one plan shows the maneuverability of of vehicles on the site and the second plan during number eight shows, or during the nine shows the um. Shows the uh, uh the tanker, uh how how the tanker delivers fuel to this here. But you know, we went into all of the maneuverability here, I think the client, the owner has ratcheted back totally. Um you know, we had support from the community board, um we do have some community. Uh somebody from the community who will speak in adjacent neighbor, I believe. Um and if you really look at this here from that standpoint, I didn't realize that last time around, in fact, um. You know, uh Vice Chad's comments the last time was uh asking me if the U-Hauls are use group eight or use group sixteen C. The U-Haul spaces needed to be striped, provide a maneuverability plan. And and you know, several of the commissioners agreed with that mindset, so I didn't think that I was walking away with, now the statement was. Um U-Hauls to be removed from the site, you know, we filed an amendment here. And hopefully, we've demonstrated through plans, through our statement of facts, that we should discuss this a little further. I don't know where we stand with that, and I'd like to ask Anthony Joseph um to jump in on that. And maybe we'll, we'll discuss this a little bit further, but the convenience store is really not a convenience store here, so it 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 definitely does not generate. Any parking, any additional traffic on this site. And maybe we should say that this is not a convenience store, that this is a part of the gasoline service station, almost like an attendance booth. Because they're not selling things, they're not selling milk bread, cigarettes, different things that people customarily sell. So there's no traffic being generated from that, um you know, there was a couple of statements about that there was. Uh you know, uh conditions where there was parking on the street, on the sidewalk, we see that. Uh the one thing that I will tell you, I'm working with this owner, um to bring them into a state of compliance, but they're not ignoring. Um the board and they're not ignoring my, me as well, um they understand, and so they ratcheted back, they have four vehicles on this site. That are dedicated to U-Hauls, um it really helps this neighborhood out, it does generate jobs. I think we should, you know, potentially look at that there a little bit closer and I'll I'll ask uh Anthony Joseph to to speak on that a little bit. May- maybe we should touch base on that, because a lot of the comments do center around that, the plantings, yes, no plantings and planters, okay, great. You know, I will uh talk to the owner and tell the owner we have no lateral move here, okay, we're removing, but I will tell you. Um as as I get more and more information about this site, it's actually the multifamily building next door, which is not a multifamily building. It's a halfway house, very transient, a lot of moving in and out of there, there was planting previously there. Uh and the planting was removed by that building, which I don't understand because it was on the site. And I never understood why the concrete that was put there was pitched, and they said basically because people were loitering there. There was drug deals going on there, there was a lot of trouble based on these people putting benches in between the plantings that were there. And um you know, creating a lot of problems for this community, but can I, can I ask Anthony Joseph just to jump in a moment?
Well, but before you do that, I want to kind of clarify the record on what we discussed with all the uses, right? Either way, the thing you're calling a half at halfway house is a place where people live.
We are clear about that.
Right, okay, so um the, so it says um. Uh I'm just gonna read some of the thing, so so Commissioner Shonda said, Vice Chair Shonda said. The applicant is requesting U-Haul rental, which may be use group eight, which is permitted in the C two, but if sixteen C. And that is an expansion of the use, that was the discussion, right? So the question is, is used as of right, we have in past had issues with U-Haul, bus gas repair stations. Definitely the parking spaces are running along the residential fence line, which is definitely not allowed. Um should see a fence there with a bunk ground landscaping as an option to prevent encroachment. Um uh then she talks about the vacuum, we need a maneuvering plan, is there? Um let's see, Commissioner Ollie Brown said the site is small for all of the uses, we have gas sales, repair, convenience and U-Haul. Understood now that it's not convenient, you have more than four cars awaiting services and two rows of U-Haul. Also hard to maneuver. Islands, I don't think the U-Haul needs to be utilized. And they are demonstrating that they can coordinate all of these uses that won't spill out into the public domain. Um then uh and she did a site visit, so she observed that Commissioner Sheta said. Concerned about noise and light spill and parking on the sidewalk site is tiny for the proposed uses, thought that they would prove. That we had it and that there would be maneuverability for the gas delivery trucks, um but that was not established. Uh Commissioner Shabeta says site is too small for the number of uses proposed, and even if managed with surgical precision, which they aren't. They are doing this without concern for their neighbors, they are backing the U-Hauls right up against their neighbors. Need a border barrier neighbors near more respect for quality of life, um. Right, so it wasn't that the, all the commissioners were, it's a go on the U-Haul.
No, 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 I agree, I agree, I wasn't saying that, please don't.
Okay.
I hear you, I, I, that's exactly what I have recorded, very clear, there's no argument there whatsoever. Um you know, we did, we did submit maneuverability plans, um we, you know, we are. Looking to put um plantings in the place, you know, where where they were shown previously approved. Uh if we need to discuss the western property line, we'll discuss that there as well, if there's any planting. Uh new plantings there that need to be there, but you know, I think overall. Um I think Anthony Joseph has a very good handle on some of the conditions that are there, because what they've been doing is really. Trying to find a way to uh have everything working safely and comfortably, uh because again, this is a benefit to this community. Um and as I said, the community board had no objection whatsoever. Uh it'll give you a little bit of an additional perspective, and if needed, if we discuss this further and try to find a way to make this all work, great. You know, if not, we'll uh, you know, we'll make whatever provisions we need to.
All right, thank you, Glenn, uh good afternoon, commissioners. Um so, as Glenn mentioned, yes, we only have four vehicles on the property, which are all parked in assigned. Um parking spots on the property, not on the sidewalk, as was a concern by the commissioners. Um also, the vehicles are gone for a large portion of the day. Um most of the vehicles return at nights, some goes out. On multiple day rentals, so the U-Hauls uh on the property, um at, as it stands right now. Only four vehicles and they are gone, they, these vehicles are utilized one hundred percent by the neighboring community. And that's what makes this U-Haul here so important for the neighbors, because they need the service, and this is the only area. In this neighborhood that they can get this, without this U-Haul here means they have to travel farther to get the necessary equipment, which also means adds cost. For the people who use it, um we have, we have provided uh supporting letters from many of our. Customers to the community board, um that's why we got the support, because they know that the people who use the service live here. So uh there is no question about the need for this service, and it's a far, far underserved neighborhood for this service, as you know. People is very transient here, we, there's a lot of move in and move out on a monthly basis. So without this service, you are, uh we are definitely going to be adding cost to um, to the neighborhood. Um earlier here in the review uh session, um. Uh I heard uh the commissioners express uh concern about the parking on the sidewalk. Just to reiterate, the U-Hauls are not parked on the sidewalk. Um they are parked in assigned parking spots at all times. Um and the vehicles that you may see on the sidewalk, um. We mentioned, uh I'm not sure, Glenn, you mentioned that there is a huge no parking sign, which we've uh already. Inscribed on the sidewalk, that most of the time is ignored. Um and um I heard the commissioner was asking about having some other mode of enforcement. Such as signs indicating no parking or you'll be towed away, those are available. Um and again, ignored. Also, I'm not sure how much this means, but when, when the staff, and even myself included. Try to enforce the no parking uh, the no parking uh rule on the sidewalk. We usually met with death threats. Um I do have staff here who do not want to come to work at this station because of the death threats they received. From simply asking someone not to park on the sidewalk.
Can I just break in for a minute? First of all, my, my comment about the towing didn't have to do with the U-Hauls, it had to do with the cars that were parked on the sidewalk. And what I'm hearing for you, from you are reasons why you can't enforce your own property rights in this neighborhood. And that's, and and also to guard against the abuse of your use within this neighborhood. And that's not filling me with any confidence that you can operate this service station. In compliance with any conditions that we put in place, if all you're gonna say is. Afraid to enforce all of our rules, it it's just not acceptable to us to hear that.
I understand that, Commissioner, but if you would just let me um just bring, bring this point back to you. These are in, these are individuals, these are not, most of the times it may not be a customer at the station. Um these people do not ask permission, the people who do it, they don't ask permission to it, they just do it. Um so it's not, it's not, I think enforcing a no parking uh rule. Is the job of the police, not, not a regular citizen like myself, and we have tried to get the police.
This is, this is your site, you own this site, and you are responsible for the sidewalk in front of your site. In the same way that if there's a blizzard, you're responsible for cleaning the snow off of the sidewalk in front of your site. This is it, you know, and if you can't get a response from the public authorities to assist you in ensuring that you're parking. That your sidewalk is. The public authorities to assist you in ensuring that your parking, that your sidewalk is free and clear of cars, then you're gonna have to hire. A private tow company. And have them enforce the conditions.
Just on that point, just on that point, I'm not sure, um. If you know this, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, uh, but for a vehicle that is parked directly on the sidewalk. For the tow truck to pick it up, it must be issued with a ticket. On the sidewalk itself. It must be issued. No, I'm, I'm saying what the tow truck company has told me in the past when we called them. It must have a ticket on the sidewalk. If it's on the property on the pump or in our parking spot. The New York City Police Department has told me that we do not need to call them to get the vehicle towed.
No, 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 no. She's not talking about the police tow truck. We. We're talking about private tow trucks that you call and you say, I have a car. That I can't get off my property. Please come and tow it away, right?
Yes.
This is you're towing it at the, oh, at the expense of the owner of the car. And since you can always trace the license numbers to, uh, location. Then the towing company, you can go after the car that's been towed. If you.
I understand it, and I wish I had a, sorry, I wish I had a record of this.
Could you please, um, let people finish talking? Um, we, we have many sites where we have this problem. And the sites get posted with a sign that says, no parking on the sidewalk. Owners will. Cars will be towed at owner's. Been effective, especially if a couple of times the cars actually get towed. Marjorie, you're freezing. Unstable. Um. Really?
Yeah.
How about now? Still frozen?
No, I hear you.
No, better.
Okay, sorry. So I don't know where I got lost, but the, the, we have other sites where the, the site is posted. No parking on sidewalk, uh, cars will be towed at owner's expense. And that has been effective, especially when a few of the cars get towed. Then, um, word sort of on the street, don't, if you're gonna park on the sidewalk, don't park on this sidewalk, right? So if you're, if you're unwilling to make any efforts at all, this is not giving us confidence. And then I look at a twenty twenty, November twenty twenty street view. Where you have many U-Hauls parked on your site that spill over onto the sidewalk. So that's also not okay. And what we were asking for is how can you manage so many activities? Whether or not there's a convenience store all at once on this site when we look at, um, aerial photographs. It's just clogged with cars parked there. So the maneuverability wasn't to see whether the cars can do something in a kind of abstractly. It was to say, how many cars do you have awaiting service if we just use that simple version? And plus all of those U-Hauls, how in the world does this site get managed and still is able to function and not impose on the community?
Can I jump in there, please?
Right.
You know, Anthony, give me one moment here. Okay, so yeah, I, you know, you. Hundred percent, hundred percent. We, we understand what was the past. Uh, you know, Anthony was the manager and the owner do understand that there is not a chance at all. Um, if they don't bring everything into control. Uh, the issue is, is that they do have records of, of three, one, one, and the police coming. And, and not responding. Okay, um, I think we can furnish that. Uh, although I, I thought that it was the condition when it is not on the property. It's on, and I, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Ollie Brown in terms of the fact that, yeah, you need to be responsible for your frontage. There's no question about it, but I don't think that legally. They can tow a private towing company, which is. You know, who they've dealt with in the past can actually tow without a ticket on a public street. Okay, yes, the police vehicles can, I know that, but I, I don't know this here for sure. The reality is, is that they ratcheted back the U-Haul business. We're clarifying the convenience store. Um, the repair shop really is not such a robust business by today's standards because. Everybody leases a vehicle. Nobody's really repairing vehicles these days. Um, and you know, the gasoline service station is what it is. Um, you know, with some decorum and, and, and managing this here properly, it most certainly can work. Although, um, you know, I don't, I don't think that, um. Uh, you know, a statement like as if they can't control it. The issue is, is that they understand it now, but if we can't get to that point, then we really need to talk about where we take this case. You know, I, I understand, but I think that they understand very much so, and I worked very closely with Anthony and the owner. Uh, to talk about the operational aspect, how all this here works, what their responsibility is. Um, and you know, the thing is, is that they are really in a tough environment. When I was doing the Lumen spread diagram, somebody came in and pulled in and parked on the sidewalk traversing the curb cut. Not even pulled over on the sidewalk, you know, away from a curb cut, knowing that this is a gasoline service station. And they went into the building next door. I have no idea what they did. But they left the car there. It was about fifteen, twenty minutes. And you know, this is the kind of thing, I mean, they're afraid to talk to these people because it's a little rough.
With all due respect, I would park there too, if you didn't enforce it. If you didn't enforce it, why would I look for a legal parking spot on the street, which may be three blocks away? So you, you can't say we didn't enforce it before, now we have a problem and now we can't enforce it. You can't, can't give us that kind of an explanation. And then want to keep on operating at full tilt on this site when you have not demonstrated in any way, shape or form that you can manage these businesses here.
I want to follow up on that. Um, if this problem wasn't unique to your, 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 your lot. If there was parking all on that sidewalk, all across the sidewalk on every, like, that'd be a different story. But it's only in front of this location.
Seems like, yeah.
I only know this location, Commissioner, so I hear you. I, I just don't know the conditions. Uh, on this site.
Uh, don't get me wrong, I am sympathetic to the concern. I, I am sympathetic to your client's concern of, of retaliation for calling. I, I understand that or. Uh, I, you know, but there, there has to be, it's, it's incumbent. On your client to find a, a measure to ensure the integrity of his lot.
Right, and not just make excuses. Um, I, I, the other commissioners' hands are up. Commissioner Sheta first and then Commissioner Shonda.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I just wanna like, cut the corners here. And I'm not sure until when we're gonna be discussing this.
Yes.
For the U-Haul, this is one issue. For the rest of the site, this is another issue. For the rest of the site, you as an owner, as an operator, you're responsible to bring this site to compliance. For the U-Haul, I believe just looking at this picture here. Ten cars onsite or nine cars that tends maybe rented onsite. That's even in conflict with your own, uh, maneuvering plan that you just submitted this submission. I believe this U-Haul use does not belong to this site. If you believe that it's an asset to the neighborhood. Take it to somewhere else within the neighborhood. But this site is saturated, it can't, this U-Haul use cannot be there. This is my input on this. I hope we should move forward.
Yes. Okay, well, whatever it is, it's almost like you need to make a choice. You have two businesses, Mr. Um, Katrona just said that, uh, the repair business isn't so busy anymore, so maybe. You need to decide you don't have all those cars awaiting service at the same time. I, I don't know. If U-Haul is a better business, maybe that becomes your business and we talk about how to maneuver. The U-Hauls, right? And not, and just forget about the cars awaiting service because they're taking valuable parking. Um, Vice Chair Shonda, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I was about to say the same thing with regards to if the auto repair is not doing such a good business and we need to reassess. At the same time, you should reach out to the community board and the local precinct to help you address, um. Uh, the operation, illegal operation on the parking operation on the site. Community boards, uh, that is one of their jobs. Go to the community board and then raise these issues and have them work with you in getting the police out there and. And, uh, uh, issue tickets. And as Commissioner Ollie Brown said, once you start. Monitoring it. Illegal operations become less and less, especially of this nature. There isn't that much of frontage to talk of, so it's not like they'll have to spend enormous amount of energy.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Joseph, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. So, um, all of the, uh, the pictures that has been looked at, uh, this from Google, or this is twenty, that's twenty twenty. And we have since made several upgrades, so. There is actually only four vehicles. I'm not sure when the site visit was done. Um, um, but, uh, whoever did the site visit, I'm sure they could attest that the color of the station is different. The signs on the on end is no longer there. The on end is now a blank color. Um, so there's quite a bit of, uh, upgrades from, uh, that Google photo that's being used. You know, so I'm not sure if that's going to make a big difference. In terms of, uh, your perception of what the gas station is now. But this is not an accurate, uh, depiction of what's going on here now. We've started. We've started making these, uh, changes and these upgrades. Uh, it's been since November last year, we've made, we've gotten rid of almost all the U-Hauls. We haven't had. More than five U-Hauls on this property at any time from since last year, um, late last year, um, so.
I'm gonna interrupt you right there. Your first hearing was March twenty twenty one. I went by that site just prior to the March twenty twenty one hearing. And I have to say, I was the one who was talking about how cluttered your site was. And so I think right now, your best bet is to discontinue the conversation. Go back to your applicant representative, sit in the office, hash everything out and figure out which way you go forward. But to sit here and tell the commissioners that what they saw, they didn't see, that's not the way you proceed.
Right, thank you. I, I thank you for that and I, we are gonna go around and around. And you just need to, you need to, in, in the, um, immutable words of Commissioner Ollie Brown, you just need to fix this thing. And so we're not gonna debate it anymore. We, we know what we've seen. You may have to make sure we don't see it again because the commissioners. Will now have this on their drive-by list and, uh, our compliance officer as well. And so spot visits will reveal it and we're not just relying on aerial photographs supplied by. Um, major corporations. Okay, so, uh, let's, uh, I'm just gonna check with Mr. Katrona if he has any questions, otherwise I'd like to go to the public and then move on to the next hearing.
Um. Chair, the, um, the other comments are, are relatively minor to the major issue. We hear the commissioners. And, uh, yourself very clearly. Uh, I will go back to the owner, to Anthony, the manager. We will discuss this and see if we have something prudent to come back to the board with to present. Or we'll make a decision on how we get to, um, you know, the extension of term based on what's, what makes sense there. Okay, we're, we're, we're clear. Uh, the other issues we don't need to speak about. We can solve any one of those other issues. This is the major issue to deal with. So I, but, um, yes, thank you, thank you all.
Go on to the public? Yeah, go to the public. So I, I understand you have a neighbor who's here to speak on this. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, we are currently discussing two ninety-nine ninety-nine BZ eight six sixteen Malkin X Boulevard, Brooklyn. The call-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The Zoom webinar ID number is nine four four seven seven three one seven nine two two. The pass code should be required is five seven five 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 four. When you're calling in, if you wish to speak, please raise star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute, and if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand.
So the member, the neighbor who wanted to speak on this case, if they still want to speak. Um, raise your Zoom hand because I don't see anyone calling in. Raise your Zoom hand, there's a little button on the bottom of your screen. You just click it. Aren't they sitting with Mr. Joseph or something like that? Oh, they must have been admitted. I didn't see that. Okay.
Uh, no, the gentleman had to leave. Um, I told him two o'clock and he had, he couldn't stay longer. So he had to leave, but he says he's willing to provide, uh, something at ride and if you need.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Oh, and we do appreciate, oh, that was one of the other things, um, I had asked, uh. That the neighbors be notified for this hearing. I didn't see notice go out to the neighbors. Notice is a formal thing where you invite them to the next hearing, just like you do on a variance application, right? So, and when we talk about neighbors, it would be the immediately adjacent and across the street neighbors who are confronted with this use, right?
Right, I had contacted the board and was told to get the adjacent neighbors. Cause we didn't have, it wasn't like as if this was, uh, you know. For as, as is done in other variance proceedings, so I contacted the board and that's what I was told. So we went to the adjacent neighbors. Uh, Anthony Joseph spoke to the people in the, uh, multifamily, uh, next door. And spoke to the super through an interpreter. Um, and they were not able to, like I said, the, the people in there, it's a halfway house, so they're moving in and out. And the super doesn't speak English and really didn't have much to add to this here. So we weren't able to get anybody next door. We do have a neighbor from the two family. And, and that's what we were told, so it was addressed. I just want you to know that. But, uh, you know, if you want it formal, uh, let's, let's figure out what we're going to familiar.
Okay, so I'm confused about what you were told by your project manager. All, all notice to neighbors has to be done. By mail, right? Where we have proof that you notified them or there's a posting. Sometimes what we do is we have a posting in the lobby, for example, with a gym, we post in the lobby. Which is another way of handling it, so. It needs to be something where we can establish that the neighbors were in fact contacted. And if it's a neighborhood where English isn't the principal language, then the posting is in whatever the language is in the neighborhood. Right?
Okay.
Um. Okay, so again, so in that case, uh, please kind, uh, get in touch with our general counsel about the way to properly post. Sure we have neighborhood participation, okay? All right, how much time to respond to these issues?
We're gonna need some time, so I'm gonna tell you, uh, where are we at it, June? Probably sometime mid-August or so, or later.
Okay. To submit. All right, so I'm gonna write mid-September then submission, right?
Very good.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph, also for participating. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Item number nineteen twelve oh one BZ twenty-eight twenty-nine Exeter Avenue, the Bronx. Mr. Eggers, is that who?
Should be Jessica. I don't know.
Hi, it's, it's Dan this time.
Oh, okay. Is it Eggers or?
It's, it's Edgar's chair pro. Yes.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
You too. Go ahead.
Who else is, oh, Dambis, Josh, and who else? Is that it, Mr. Eggers?
Josh and, uh, Brendan Kelly should also be here.
Oh, here, thank you.
There are four Dan Eggers in the room right now. So if you know how to rename yourself in Zoom, please do so or state your name again.
So one of the Eggers who's not an Egger, please state your name and spell it if we can't understand.
I think one of them is me, Brendan Kelly, B R E N D A N A D L L Y. I'll try to find a way to update it. I gotta figure out which one's me.
We, we can do it. We can. Yeah, there we go. Okay, that cuts down to three Eggers.
One of me is more than enough.
Is there someone else who's calling in? Is there someone else who's calling in on your number?
Perhaps Dennis Flynn, the project architect.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, you want to start talking so we can figure out which one of the Eggers is you?
Yes, I'm not sure which one, but it's Dennis Flynn. Yes.
I think Kurt has it, right?
Yes.
F L Y N N?
Correct. Thank you.
One left.
Anybody else named Dan? Okay, maybe not.
Okay, let's go. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, then nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? This goes for all participants, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly also.
Yes.
Everybody say aye. Thank you.
I do.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Eggers.
Hi, good afternoon. Chair Perlmutter, Commissioners Dan Eggers from Greenberg Charred, representing the applicant. I'm joined here, as you see, by members of the applicant team. We watched the review session regarding the comments that were made. First, concerning landscaping, we will look into landscaping and compliance with 3790. The initial reaction of the team is that there are opportunities for adding additional landscaping and we will respond in a subsequent submission. Secondly, the requested revisions to the plans will be made, including showing maneuverability. Commissioner Otley Brown was correct that the deliveries are made by small trucks. So we will show maneuverability for, for small trucks. Next, there was a comment made regarding whether the details on the BPP were standard or site specific. Brendan Kelly, who is here from McLaren, the engineer, has told me that those details are site specific. And he has also told me that in response to Commissioner Shade's comment that the leg for the rebar will be flipped. And next, Commissioner Shade had asked for an update on sidewalk construction. The owner tells me that they remain on track for completion in September. Construction documents are complete and have been submitted to DOB and are currently under review by DOB. As for DOT, that permit application is being prepared and they expect that that will be submitted to DOT this week. And the contractor will be awarded within the coming days, I am told. And with that, I welcome any other questions or comments.
Regarding the leg of the retaining wall, is it, is it okay that you constructed on a city property?
So the entire, the entire retaining wall is going to have to be on city property. Our, our property line is at the curb line. So that's part of the DOB application and DOT discussion here. Since we're being asked to construct that sidewalk, the only viable way is to put the retaining wall there. So we're going to have to get their approval to build it in the right way. But it's not just the foot at the toe. It's the entire, the entire wall is outside of the property.
So doesn't that mean you're going to need a revocable consent?
Potentially.
So that's, I believe, a very long process. Not sure.
I, I'm not sure about timing. I, I've done ones that are not, it's on the order of weeks. I'm not sure.
Really? Okay. Maybe it won't be as long as I thought.
Why do you have to do that? I mean, you can, you can, it's a very simple wall. You could construct the entire wall on your property. Why you want to go outside?
Our property, the end of the parking spot is the end of our property.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, so that area that, that is currently sloped, that's city property?
It's like in an easement. Yeah. So basically the wall is going in an easement area.
Okay. Okay, got it.
We looked at that originally to try to hold.
You, you, you're the structure, right?
So I, I'm the site civil. The structure was in my office and works with me.
Okay. I, I wish you have somebody to take a look at that design of that wall. I, I believe it's a, it's an overkill.
Yeah. So we didn't really have, we didn't really have forings, right? So we, we were trying to be a little bit conservative in order to design it. I, I agree the key might be conservative. But we're using it to resist sliding.
No, no, no. The key, I'm not saying the key is, is conservative. The key is
You're saying the size of itself?
Conceptually, the key rebar is incorrect. I'm, I'm sticking with my position on that. What I'm talking about is the leg of the retaining wall. If you add two, three inches plus six and a half plus probably another one inch, this is total of about 10 feet, almost 10 feet footing. That for, for a retaining wall that's six feet or seven feet tall, retaining just seven feet of dirt. That's even the differential is less than that. That's, that's a way overkill. So if you want to, if you want to do it like that, it's up to you guys, but I just wanted to advise.
We'll, we'll look at optimizing it. Yeah. Like you said, I agree with you on the rebar. So we'll, we'll be updating that and I'll take a look at optimizing the footing, the footing line. We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right then, let's go to the public.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, just, just a question regarding the discussion with Mr. Kelly about the, I guess, the contingency of approval on the city sidewalk. Just preemptively, so there's no issue, should some notation be considered on the site plan reflecting that we're not taking a position on, on the sidewalk?
What do you, not taking a position on whether the sidewalk can be developed like that?
Well, it's contingent on DOT, right? And I guess DOB, I'm not sure. I'm sorry if I have this wrong. I just don't want to presume that we're approving something on behalf of another agency where we may not have jurisdiction.
Right. But I, they're applying for this before we vote on this, right? We want to see the work done. So it's going to be done before we actually vote. Since they're telling us September, assuming the revocable consent is a fast process, they're telling us it'll be completed by September.
That's, that's correct. Yes.
Right. So we haven't approved anything yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to avoid any misunderstandings down the line that could cause a delay for, for, obviously for this site.
Right.
Just, just a quick question, Madam Chair, because the adjacent property is pending. The application of the adjacent property is pending. So some, at some point, are we going to hook these two up or do these separately?
Well, the goal is to have them travel in tandem, but the second property didn't file or just.
They did file, I would notice, I believe a notice of comments and Ben Roy can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe a notice of comments went out, but it has not been responded to.
Right. So isn't this the same, Mr. Eggers, don't you also represent them, the neighbor?
That is correct. The notice of comments was received a few weeks ago. We're working on a response and we expect to submit a response within the next week.
Okay, so to save time, don't wait for the board to tell you what they've already told you in this case, right?
Understood.
Handle the lighting, handle the sidewalk, handle the landscaping on that side in a way that's consistent with this application. So perhaps it's then just a, you know, good job, have a nice day kind of thing, right?
That's what we're doing.
Several hearings and ideally we'll be able to link up for the next hearing with that one. So they'll travel in tandem. So, and obviously the sidewalk is, so you're filing for a sidewalk to continue in front of the storage facility, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, okay. Good. All right. Carl, is your hand up again or that's the old hand?
No, I, I like raising my hand. No, I just, for Mr. Eggers, I just, yeah, I, I think subsequent to this hearing, as we considered the, the schedule in the next few days, our, our office will reach out to you. Perhaps we could just coordinate everything and totally the other applications so that all your submissions, responses and the two items can run in tandem as the chair suggested so that the next hearing could maybe complete everything.
Right.
That sounds good, Carl. Thank you.
Okay, great. So let's go then to the public. Okay.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is 1201BZ 2829 Exon Avenue, the Bronx. Should you wish to call in, the call in number is 646-558-8656. Webinar ID number is 944-7731-7922. And the passcode should be required is 575-554. And if when you call in, you raise your hand, it's star nine, star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
All right. So how much, so actually, we do want to see the landscaping drawings. How much time to do that? And then of course, whatever the progress is on the sidewalk. We don't have any, it's unlikely you'll be able to have a submission in time for the July hearing. Maybe you will end of July hearing. Depends on how much time you need for the landscaping.
I mean, I would suspect we would need probably no more than a couple of weeks for the landscaping drawings.
Okay, is the person who does your landscaping drawings on the phone, on the call?
Dennis, is that, is that you?
I, I think we would be documenting it, but I think Brendan might be designing it.
Through McLaren, right?
Yeah.
So, so we have provided landscape drawing. But maybe I need to get in touch with Dan and just determine, make sure I'm, I'm meeting everything required. So we, we can work together on that. I'm, maybe I just need to clarify what you're looking for.
So what we were talking about is the landscaping falls short of the regulations and the zoning resolution. 3790.
Sure.
Sets out real detail on what a parking lot should look like. And in particular, you don't have any landscaping along Grace Avenue, which disturbs me because that's the residential area. So there should be compliance with 3790 to the extent that that's physically doable. But specifically, you need the landscaping of that type along Grace Avenue. And since you have more parking spaces than you're required to have, if it means a loss of a few more to accommodate that, then so be it, it seems to me.
Okay. Yeah, we have the landscape architect part of our, our team here. So I'll, I'll discuss that with them and that square like we, and we only need a few weeks, like you said, it won't, it won't be, we don't need more than that.
So do you need three weeks? Do you need two weeks? What do you need?
Well, I need to also clarify some of the retaining wall questions, right? So do, would they all go together or would you want to see the landscape in July?
Well, actually, you know, since you're going to be working on the sidewalk, in fact, starting in September, is that right? The contractor is going to be contracted really soon for a start date, a construction start date of when? Does anyone have any idea?
I had heard September, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, this is Josh from Acadian, owner. Once we get permits, we'll start. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, but we don't have a firm date.
Right. Okay. Now, what I was thinking of is if you came in just with the revised landscape drawings, then we could say, yeah, good to go. And then you hire people to, you know, dig stuff up.
Okay, we should focus on that.
Okay, so you're going to have to, when you get back to your landscape architect, you can let us know. I'm going to write like you need three weeks to submit. But if that turns out not to be correct, please let us know. Okay? Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I didn't see anybody from the public with their hands up on this, right? Did we already call the public to speak?
Yes, we did.
We did. Nobody from the public asked to speak. Okay. So then, all right, so I'm asking three weeks to submit, or writing to submit, right? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Okay, the next item is item number 207204BZ 14154 Northern Boulevard, Queens. Anyone who's not with this case, please drop off. Thank you.
Hi, so I should have Adam Wolfe and Larry O'Brien. I don't see either.
Adam Wolfe was on the, yeah, he's there. Okay.
Okay. He is the owner and Larry O'Brien is from, oh, there he is, from High Point. He is the engineer. Okay.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, please unmute yourself.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed, Ms. Foldear.
At least Foldear from Eric Palatnik PC. I'm going to straight, just turn it over to Mr. Wolfe because he did a lot of your, he did pretty much all of the things you asked. And he's going to discuss the ADA, I mean, the vacuum as well as the lighting, Mr. Wolfe.
Yep, thank you. So I, I kind of remember most of what we went through, or you went through in the review session. So A, I just want to recall, you said we were going to paint a block wall. Can you please describe which wall that is in between where and where?
There is a five foot high block wall. I think at the rear of the building and I'm basing this on photos, right? When we get photos of the site.
Sure. So just fill out the photos and.
But I mean, you know, you could look around and you can see this wall looks pretty bad. We should give it a paint job, right?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at those walls, that wall is white and then oh, okay. So just where the plants are sitting in front, that's just, okay, it's a little bit of algae, but okay, no problem.
Well, so the whole idea is the place should look spiffy all the time to the extent spiffy applies to these kinds of sites, right? We have seen sites like this, by the way. There's one that I can't remember the address. One of the commissioners will remember where it is downright spiffy. You know, there's beautiful planters. It really looks like a place where you want to have lunch and it turns out to be a gas station. So that's what we're going for here. So with that in mind, a place you want to have lunch, you should like it, it should be spiffy. Okay?
Okay, we don't serve food, but sure.
I know, gas stations don't normally serve food, but like you would want to bring a little picnic table and set it right up at that gas station because it's so nice looking.
Okay. Concerning the air and vacuum machine. So initially, I don't know if everyone recalls, the air and vacuum machine was located at the corner of the property on the other side near the, near the, that'd be south curb cut on Parsons. So it was near the, South Parsons curb cut near the residential building. They were in that planter there.
All right.
If you look at the photographs, are they numbered? Photograph number eight. You'd see there's a, there's a light pole on the, where there's two, two fixtures. Photo eight or view eight.
It takes us a little while for.
That's okay. Right, it's the east approach of Parsons. South, yeah, so I said south.
So what are we, what are we?
So they were initially located there and the board asked us to move them away from the residence because they obviously make noise, which we did. So then we moved them to the Northern Boulevard side where they're located now. The reason that there, we moved them away from the ADA spot is, one, we didn't want customers who are using the, those two, you know, pieces of equipment to haphazardly park in the ADA spot. That wouldn't be beneficial for someone who needs to use it. So that, that area that where they are is actually striped as a no parking area. So we felt it was in the best interest that it, since it, you know, when you vacuum your car or get air, it's a temporary use. You, you know, you pull in, you use your use, you go away. Otherwise, that area is designated as no parking.
Do we have a photo of its, of that particular location subsequently?
Well, if you go to picture number two or view two, I'm sorry. You can see the machines all the way up there on the corner of the property. And I mean, you can, you can actually see the striping a little bit. We can get a, a better photo. That's a little bit more of a close up.
It's a little bit diagonal, right?
Yeah, you see like they don't, they don't look like real parking spots because the parking is not like they're the striping saying they're like on the angles, correct?
Yeah. Can you see that, Commissioner Shanda? You have to go to the photo.
Very familiar with the site. I think I just want to correct it for the record. The reason we had asked the air back to be located from the corner of Parsons Boulevard or what would you, you would say parking lot number one, parking space number one, was because when I had gone on a site visit, there was a car. was because when I had gone on a side visit, there was a car that was parked on the sidewalk that was using the air vac machine. And that's exactly why we do not, the board felt that having any air vac machine right next to a, to sidewalk encourages vehicles to park on the sidewalk, to use the air vac machine instead of being within the property. So yes, we do appreciate the fact that it has been moved from the Parsons Boulevard property line, but now it's on Northern Boulevard. Granted, Northern Boulevard is a much busier pedestrian route, and it's highly unlikely somebody is going to park on the sidewalk. But my question in this case is not that much of the concern of vehicle being on the sidewalk. It's more of, would it still not affect the maneuverability of vehicles using the curb cut that is on Northern Boulevard?
No, and I, and I, and that, to my, to your point, I feel that this is the, it's like a compromise. It's the lesser of all the evils of this one, you know, I'm moving it, I moved it away from one side, I'm trying to keep it away from the residence. I don't want it too close to the ADA to create an ADA issue. It's probably sitting now, the air machine, five to six feet from the property line. A car should be able to, to get in there and use one of those two machines, and still there should be plenty of, of driveway for a car coming eastbound on Northern to, to maneuver right around it.
Okay, so what I'd suggest is the drawing needs to be corrected, amended to show the striping that you already have down there, and show the route of a car that comes in to go into, to take advantage of the air and vac.
Sure.
And also another car passing by that car, because that's what Commissioner Shanda is concerned about, right? That it'll just block that curb cut entirely while you're cleaning your car.
Okay, and then the final item, I, I guess, because everything else we complied with, we, we did the planting, we did the sidewalk work. All the signs are down, and I think we removed all the, anything from the front of the building would be the lighting. So the lighting, we, we, you know, as a, as an owner of a number of service stations, we take somewhat concern with, as in the fact that these sites are dark at night, they do have dark corners. You know, we're more worried about our customers and, and their safety while on a site. And I am actually, you know, like, I'm not, you know, like, it's somewhere in the, in the hearing, you said that we were worried about what, like, the neighbor's property. I'm not actually worried about the neighbor's property, I'm worried about my property, what happens on it. We have a serious migrant worker issue at the corner. No one seems to be able to take that under control. They are known to enter our property and use the back corner as a bathroom. And lighting definitely prevents them from doing, you know, that type of stuff. So we, we discussed it briefly. I think the lights are probably standard, which makes them sixteen or eighteen feet tall. I probably can move them down pretty rapidly down to ten feet, which would make their overall splash a little bit less noticeable for the residents next door. However, if you look at the, either the photographs or the illumination plan, both lights, you know, the light to the right or the one deepest into the property is directly against a brick wall. So I mean, the wall is acting as a barrier. You know, when you get to the, into the, we obviously cannot take measurements inside of the other person's property inside of that little cutout code. You're at about a one looms or so, for the most part, one or two, oh, here it is, sorry.
So be, before you just go on and on and on with this.
Yeah.
Let's just make this simple, right? The light has to be lower than the height of the fence.
There is, there is no fence there.
There is a fence, yes, there is, there's a fence right in front of the, of the areaway of that courtyard.
It's not a fence, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a metal thingy. It's like, it doesn't block light, it's just, it's just raw, raw iron.
That's known, known as a fence, right?
It's not blocking any light.
No, I'm saying, you put it at that level and you put a, a shield on that portion of the fence so that there is nothing, so it can't penetrate the fence at that place. Because if you make it ten, ten feet high, it's shining light past the fence, past anything that's controllable. So
Fence is non-controllable, so I'm not sure I understand.
The fence can be made opaque by you adding
I don't, I don't own that fence, I'm not touching it.
On your side of the property, is it on
Not my side of the property, I don't own that fence.
So then put up something, then put up something that is on your property to block your light. Either you mount it to the fence, you get permission to mount it to the fence, or you create something of your own that will block the light. You can't have the light at ten feet because it will shine right into the people's rooms.
And how, how does it shine in if I bring it down and it's against a brick wall? I mean, at least I should, I should at least try it.
Okay, you can, you can try, but we may be at this a long time, right?
I'm totally comfortable with that.
All right, it's only, it's your dime.
Kind of, but okay. Yeah, I'm comfortable experimenting before I go in and try to put a fence permit up in between me and my neighbor. You know, that becomes another whole, like, issue.
Actually, you used to have something
What?
I'm, I'm sorry, you used to have something that, like, more or less, for some extent, blocked the light. You used to have, like, landscaping, climbing trees and shops.
You are correct, and for the boards, to the, for the board, we just ripped out all our landscaping and replaced it. So now we have a whole bunch of new trees that, yes, over time will grow and block all the light. But, you know, it does take time for them to grow.
Right? So what, Commissioner Sheta, what were you saying?
What I was saying is, is previously, they used to have this. And, and, and now it is just
Oh, we couldn't see that, you changed it too fast.
Oh, really? I'm sorry. Is it there yet?
No, but there's a band in front of it. So, okay, now, now, close in?
Yeah, that, that was like very dense landscaping that
Right, that, that was in bad shape, so they fixed it, or whatever they did.
Yeah, but now, when they, when they took this off, now the fence became like, it's not, like you said, it's not a fence, it's, it's, it cannot block anything.
It is a fence, but it's not opaque.
Yes, it's, it's not lightproof.
Correct. Correct.
So if, if you're spilling light on the adjacent property, you need to stop that. And, and I recall, like, probably three hearings ago, or maybe two hearings ago, we were talking about lighting. And I recall this like it's now, I, I mentioned something about the orientation of the light pools. I believe what's creating the issue on this site when it comes to light measurements is the orientation of the two light pools closest to the building.
Right, that we moved them. They were located, initially, those lights were located in the courtyard. If you look at that photo again, you just showed us, you'll see the aerial light. It is now been moved.
Yes, I, I understood, yes, I totally understand that you took them away further from each other, close to the corners. But the orientation, you put them at, is like they are shooting to the, that courtyard.
How could they shoot into the courtyard if there's a building in the way? That would be, they're being naturally blocked by the building.
Not really.
Then if I put a shield on them.
So it's obviously not blocked by the building, or we wouldn't get light readings of five and seven at, at the opening at the courtyard. So let's not fight about this.
If you go back carefully, if you go back to that hearing and listen to what I said, I said you will need to take them away from the courtyard close to the edges of the site, and you will need to make him as close as possible to the building so the building itself can act as a shield for the courtyard.
Right, so we did that.
What, what you did is you took them actually to the front inside the site, and you made the orientation the worst that can shed light to that courtyard. That's why you were getting six and seven looming, that, that spread into that courtyard.
I don't want to argue with you, we only moved one light. The light that's on Parsons has never changed, it's been there the whole time.
All right, what, it, it, you know what, there's no reason to have a debate about this. The light, the light levels cannot exceed zero on someone else's property, end of discussion, all right? So whatever needs to be done to make that happen, make that happen, okay?
We'll, we'll experiment until we get it right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if there's anything else on the lighting. All the other comments were on lighting, as far as I can tell, right?
Yeah. I see a lot of improvements.
Yes, no, we appreciate the improvements, so one more step and then we'll be done. So let's go to the public.
Yeah.
The case we are currently discussing is seventy-two oh four BZ one forty-one dash fifty-four Northern Boulevard, Queens. The call-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The Zoom webinar ID number is nine four four seven seven three one seven nine two two. The pass code you require is five seven five 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 four. And if you, when you're calling in, if you wish to raise your hand, press star nine and star six to unmute. If you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand to speak.
Okay, so while we wait to see if anyone raises their hand about the app, this application seventy-two dash oh four BZ. So the only things to do are modifying the drawings to show the striping and maneuverability to show that access from the curb and carve in the air vac location. And the other part of it is to cure the issue with the lighting, okay?
The wall.
And, and paint the wall, right, and show us that the wall is painted. So how much time?
Adam, how much time do you want to experiment with the lighting?
He's talking to somebody right now, so, Adam, Mr. Wolfe.
Yep.
How much time do you think to experiment with the lighting?
Uh, what do we got, June? I don't know, we should be, I should be able to figure this out, I mean, makes it later in the night, but sometime in August, we should be done.
Okay.
The wall will be painted immediately, Larry can do the plans immediately, and we just have to figure out what we're gonna do with the lighting.
Okay, so I have you down for submit and August, which would mean a September hearing probably.
Perfect, yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate all of the work you've done so far, we're nearly there, okay?
Yep.
Good.
Item number twenty-one, forty-two oh eight BZ one eighty-two Gerard Street, Brooklyn.
Should have a man by the name of Boris on the call. Do you see a Boris?
Yeah, Boris, wait, oh.
Stop, stop, stop. We have been at this for two hours and forty-five minutes, I didn't realize, I didn't give anybody a break. Let's take a ten-minute break. And then, sorry, on this case, okay, ten minutes back at basically five to five, okay?
Ready?
Yeah.
Sorry, Carl had me on the phone, sorry.
Yeah, she first called, you know, really, so commissioners, please come back. Okay.
We all ready?
I think we have everyone, yes.
Okay, we're back on the record for the public hearing, June fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, two P M session. The next case is item number twenty-one, forty-two oh eight B Z, one eighty-two Gerard Street, Brooklyn.
I, uh, I see Boris is on, that is the only person who will probably be speaking with me, so, okay.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, another bit of the truth in your chest and mind before this, or to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed. I heard you, Ms. Doris.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik P C, um, we're gonna first tackle the easier questions. Um, there was a question regarding the two hundred and thirty-one square feet. Um, that is actually twenty-three point one square feet, and it is mechanical space. Uh, Boris is here to clarify, and it is counted as floor area.
Oh, why is it counted as floor area?
Yeah, because all, all attic is, uh, we count it as a floor area, except boiler room.
Okay. But what is that space?
That's space for, uh, we propose for mechanical use, uh, as a, uh, air handlers for H V C, probably. Probably for attic, or, I mean, for second floor.
It's an HVAC system?
Yeah, it'll be.
Air handler, oh. So, but I'm confused, why are you counting it as floor area, because you're not taking any mechanical deductions, or why?
No, we count it, because I count, I deduct only boiler room forty-eight square feet, point two, forty-eight point two, deduct that one only.
Okay.
Okay, and then, your next question was about, um, how to get to the attic?
Yeah.
And I can also share the plans, and if you think that's helpful, Boris, or you can explain that.
Yeah, I can explain, uh, in the previous approved B S A application, right, it was, uh, stationary staircase providing to the attic access. But, uh, as per examiner, which one, uh, I met with examiner regarding this application in D O B. So, he pointed is not, and so we illuminate stationary staircase to going to the attic and provide a pull-down staircase, which is located in the south part of the building, next to the left side on the boiler room, if you look at it. It says, like a rectangle, that is dash line, and P D S T is a wording, pull-down staircase.
Wow.
If you look, I think.
Oh, I see, yeah, you have to zero in on it close, okay, P D S T.
Second floor also, it, it shows next to the laundry, if you look at it.
I see, okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then, we heard your comments about resolving all the objections and the Z R D one, and I can pull that up too, if there's any clarifications, but we also asked if we rewrite the Z R D one language, can we submit it to council or project manager for approval, so it is the language you're looking for?
Yes, so I would like you to work on the writing of it, because it's not intelligible, and then submit that to council for review, okay?
Yeah, um, but Boris, do you wanna ask any specific questions right now, or?
Um, is it just this question, yes, if you don't mind, so, Z, as per last meeting in March, right, it was, uh, raised objection from, uh, B S A, from your honor, uh, Z R D one from D O B clarification of floor area in the attic, right? So, and we actually mentioned this to respond. However, proposed attic floor area included F A R one, two F A R one point zero, as per special permit B S A, forty-two zero eight approved. We filed to amend design and layout. Uh, lot area sixty-two hundred, uh, sixty-two forty hundred, uh, special permit B S A, uh, as per one point zero six two zero four zero square feet, proposed six two three nine square feet, which is not exceeding one point one, one point zero actual. We're proposing sixty-one fifty-nine point nine, that's how calculation came out to, and proposed total, and, and that one is included into the, um, in, uh, even, uh, I'm sorry, and proposed to amend total floor area to increasing, yeah, uh, seventy-nine point one square foot, which is not exceed one point zero. And also, regarding attic, we also mentioned here, and, um, dormers, height you're saying over here, maximum height regulation, and I, I, I saying here, uh, S G P P N, uh, twelve dash eighty-eight, exterior side wall attic, dormers inside required envelope, and not exceed seven foot in height. So, proposed attic area is under roof rafter sloping in between five and seven point eleven, seven dash eleven inches, uh, seven foot dash eleven inches in height, so, and there's not, basically, um, we, we comply with, uh, court, and I mean zoning resolution and coordinate P P and also.
All right, well, so let me, let's, let's just clarify this. When I read the language in the Z R D one, I don't understand it, but the bit, but, so, the commissioner who was reviewing it won't understand it either, okay? So, that's why I'd like Ms. Foladere to re-draft it, and I'd like to, I'd like it to ask the very specific question. As designed, does the attic, um, is the attic floor area, or what part of the attic constitutes floor area? That's the question, not what the B S A is approving and all of that, the, the objection, let, let me just finish my sentence, please. The objection said, because you had, that a, a fixed stair is taken into account to determine whether an attic is floor area. As far as I can tell, all you did was eliminate the fixed stair, right? I don't know if that's enough to cure the objection, but my understanding was the objection was greater than that. The objection looked at the height of the attic and all of the places to determine whether or not the attic is floor area. We would like to know from the Z R D one, whether the attic is floor area, and if so, how much of the attic is floor area? That, that's the simple question.
I see.
And as to the height, whether the height of the building and the dormers are permitted in, in terms of the heightened setback regulations, because the objection says the dormer is not a permitted obstruction. So, we need to get the D O B to agree that the height is permitted, because we're not waving height.
Yeah, yeah, and, but, uh, I, I just wanna tell you, um, the dormers, which one, proposing dormers, he are, is not in a permitted obstruction. We, we call this not a permitted obstruction even, because, uh, dormers located is in envelope of the building.
Okay, so what you wanna do is, uh, seek confirmation that the entire roof profile is within the, um, allowable envelope, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I understand now what you exactly want, you want me to put exactly in wording.
Yes.
I see, I missed that, yes, so.
Right, so, I understand, and, um, so, but it'll help if you have Ms. Foladere, uh, craft the language with you. That way, we'll, we'll know that the question is being presented to the commissioner very simply and clearly, okay?
And we addressed a number of drawings, right, also, each drawing specifically shows that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I understood now.
Okay.
So, do you need still all the other obje, what are we doing about the other objections?
Well, that's a part I don't understand, like, why are you waiting for the other objections to be cured? Why don't you just get rid of them, so the only open issues are the B S A?
To be honest, you're not waiting, I, I've been already in two appointments, but, uh, main appointment, uh, main, he's argued examiner, he said to me, approve attic and everything will be resolved. I asked him specifically, can you, uh, mark this one as a result? He said, it's all combined, so, resolve this B S A, come back to me, and, uh, I will do it. So, now, as you told before, to resolve objection, I tried to make an appointment, and I see examiner is gone. So, now I, I need to reassign to another one, so, because, uh, until June fif, July fifteen, he's not able. So, then I called to the builder department while we, in the break, so they said, he's gone, so I need to reassign.
And he said, I just want you to know that he sat at the D O B all Friday, waiting around for an answer, and got no.
Yes, that's, that's also issue, every day we were there, so to answer Z R D, Z R D.
So, let's put it this way, if, if when you make the appointment for the Z R D one, because it's gonna take some time, and I guess you're going to be meeting with somebody, I'm not really sure, um, see if you can handle it there, and if you can't, you can't, I don't want this to go on forever, I just thought that you had, were sitting around waiting for them, but apparently.
Oh, no, building department examiner for building, no problems, Z R D one, they, they still, uh, they still, uh, reviewing it, you know? But my main, uh, time is, uh.
Okay.
Issue.
Okay.
So, I, so we'll provide that information.
Okay.
Details.
Okay, so let's go, any other questions, anything from commissioners? No, okay, let's go to the public.
So, the case we are discussing currently is forty-two oh eight B Z, one eighty-two Gerard Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to call in on this case, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. The Zoom webinar ID number is nine four four seven seven three one seven nine two two. Passcode is five seven five 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 four. And when you call in, you want to press star nine to raise your hand, and star six to unmute to speak. If you're in the Zoom room already, press your Zoom hand to speak.
Okay, we have one person in the waiting room who had his hand up, his or her hand up before, um.
Might be the owner, he might have, he registered as well, if it's.
Uh, okay, so.
I don't know, but it might be the owner.
Okay, Mr. Katsura?
Yeah, that's the owner.
Okay, all right, so, so far, nobody from the public is voting, and how much time do you think this time to, you know, get the Z R D one drafted, submitted, responded to, because I don't wanna have a hearing where we don't have an answer to that question?
So, we still need to get answer from, uh, commissioner's office, right, from the D O B commissioner's office regarding the Z R D one.
Yes, you need to, you need to redraft the Z R D one, so we have the wording that is acceptable, and then submitted, and then wait, and then however long it takes for D O B to respond to your request, so what's the estimate?
Basically, any day I should, was to get an answer, but I will resubmit this on the Wednesday.
No, no, no.
We need, they wanna comment first, so we need to give them a few, a week or two, or however long they need to comment. And then, don't go back to D, D O B until they approve what we've redrafted.
Don't resubmit what you already submitted, the wording is too confusing, and understand the question.
I can, correct, I will correct, I will submit.
Right, so you don't, so you'll, Ms. Foladere, and you will work together to correct the wording. And then, after we've looked at it, then you can resubmit, okay, don't resubmit before then, all right?
But, yeah, so me and, me and him can work, he's ready to go, as you can see, so me and him in the next week can work on the wording and get back to council, I don't know how long they need, and then, he's again, ready to go, we're hopeful, we want to finish this, so, whatever the best you think we can do as well.
But I don't know how long it takes to get a Z R D one responded to, so.
I don't either.
Any, any guesses, Mr. Abdurrahmanov?
Yeah, I was hoping for, today I will get that some answer, but I, I never, because every day I was there, and they still reviewing, and they changed examiner for one to another one.
Right, all right, what do we, how about we try the end of September for a submit, that sound reasonable?
I would love, I would love to do it earlier, because I know for sure now, now, because the second time review over there, so they will give me faster, if you can get to faster to me.
Well, we, we gave you six weeks on this last one, actually, it was longer, the last time we saw you, uh.
Pretty much the review.
March, right, we saw you in March, so, that was three months ago, right? So, three months wasn't enough, so. And anyway, we only have one hearing in September, and you would have to be ready, and by the end of August with this, which doesn't sound likely, right? So.
Oh, yeah, and I think me and Boris are just thinking, in the interest of the client, we just want the best we can do, and if you think that's the best we could do, we'll take it.
Okay, and September submission, okay? Right, it's better to come in like that than to get a, uh, an adjournment, because you're not ready, and then that puts you at a much later point, it's better to be more conservative, okay?
Okay.
All right, good, thank you very much, appreciate your attending.
Thank you too. It was great.
You too.
Okay. That's the last case, so this concludes, anything else? Nope, okay, so this concludes the public hearing for June fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, two P M session, we resume tomorrow at seven A.